All right, welcome everybody. Today is October 28, 2014. This is generally a work session day, but we do have a special agenda item that requires a special meeting, a resolution that the Board of County Commissioners be in favor of, the ballot question 1A, the Aspen Ambulance District. So I will take a motion to go into a special meeting.
So moved.
We have first and second any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a resolution on our, in our special meeting agenda packet. And John, I don't know if you want to give a little introduction to this, and we can certainly take comments from the Board, because I'm sure there are a few things to be said about the election process in this particular ballot.
Yes, thank you, Rob. We have in front of the Board today, at the Board's request, a resolution in support of question 1A, which is a, both a mill levy increase, as well as a debruising for the Aspen Ambulance District. The Aspen Ambulance District is a separate political subdivision where the Board sits, ex officio is the Board of the Ambulance District. It was created in 1982 with a .82 mill levy. Because of the effects of Tabor, the Taxpayers Bill of Rights, as well as the Fenton Amendment and the county's Home Rule Charter, that effective mill levy has been reduced down to .22 mills. That has created some budget challenges for the ambulance district, and so the question is in front of the voters this November to allow the ambulance district to collect not the full .82 mills, but roughly .5 mills. Five-one. Thank you, Rachel. .51 mills, in order to both keep the high level of service that the ambulance district has been able to provide, as well as modernizing and updating facilities to accommodate new equipment. So the Board had requested that we put a resolution of support for this ballot question in front of the Board, and that is why we have this special meeting today.
Board comments? Rachel.
Thank you. Are these already on? I'm assuming, okay, great. Thank you. Today, I'd like to say is a little bit of a formality, because in the process of our budget hearings and setting the ballot question, our Board is in support of this measure going forward unanimously, but we didn't really have that sort of formal resolution to say that B.O.C.C. had passed support. But I thought it was really appropriate that we join other partners, such as the Aspen Chamber Resort Association, who have voted to approve this measure and support it, the Aspen Skiing Company, the Aspen Valley Hospital Board, and the Public Safety Council. And I think that everyone realizes how important that network of care and of safety providers that we have out there are, and how well they work together, whether it's for an incident on the mountain, or an incident at the airport, accident on Highway 82, or just someone having illness, or slip and fall in their own home. So I wanted to add only that the process going forward, when this is approved, is that the B.O.C.C., acting as the ambulance district, will be approving those future budgets and collections of the mill levy. So once we have been able to, through a public process and public outreach, determine how best to either remodel, replace, or lease new space for new ambulance facility, we can match the dollars that are collected to the actual need. And so that will be annually approved by the Board of County Commissioners. It's a great deal of public scrutiny. Their budget needs to be presented each year publicly. And so this being the first request ever that the Aspen Ambulance District has ever made of the public to increase their mill levy, or the collections they're allowed to collect, I think that it deserves our community's support. We've dealt with the budgets for the ambulance district for the seven and a half years I've been on this Board, and always knew a time was coming when there would be a mill levy increase, despite significant shuffling and restaffing and ability to close down that budget gap. There's been greater efficiencies created significantly in the operations of the ambulance district, but the current budget just is not sustainable. So I'm encouraging everyone I know to be sure to turn your ballot in, and to be sure to vote yes on 1A.
Steve.
I too totally support this. There was a little bit of a glitch on the ballots of Down Valley and Snowmass Village people, that this ballot question 1A was included on their ballots. And just to remind people, if you live in Snowmass Village, or any of the Down Valley precincts, you don't live in the Aspen Ambulance District territory, and your vote for this wouldn't count. If you do mark the ballot accidentally, they just won't count it, because you don't live in the right precinct, but it won't count against your whole ballot being improper or anything. And also, I would note that this year in the Colorado State Legislature, there probably will be the paramedic bill coming forward, which would allow paramedics from ambulances to do more medical procedures when they're on a call. And that should have the effect of actually helping to bring healthcare costs down. And having a really highly trained ambulance district with the paramedics really trained and with the specialized equipment will help to, you know, on our total healthcare cost strategy, to bring the costs down, or hold them at a lower level.
George.
I'm going to go off on a slight tangent. We are now one week away from the election. This year's election, although it's not a presidential election, I think it's probably going to be even more critical for us in the state of Colorado. And it's imperative that we all take the, our right to go out and vote. The decisions that we have, in terms of who will be representing us on a state level and on a national level, will have long-term implications in terms of how we, certainly as a state and a country, move forward. When we look at issues such as climate change, if we want to try to pursue some legislation to address that, or whether we look at trying to do some immigration reform legislation, environmental issues, that we are all well aware of the importance, how our economy relies on our clean air and our clean water, certainly the whole issue in terms of the opportunity for women to have, follow their own beliefs, for their health choices and equal pay, when you look at opportunities for our younger people to be able to find opportunities to go to college at a formal level, these are issues that are going to be determined, in a large part, with this year's election, from our state senators and state representatives, to our governor, to our United States Senator. And I know there's been a lot of negative ads, we're all tired of the phone calls and watching these ads, but we can't let money buy this election. It's up to us to be able to, again, take the opportunity to go out and vote. So I encourage everyone in Picken County, certainly in Eagle County as well, we need to get the vote out. I think later this afternoon, as part of our agenda, we'll have an update from our clerk and recorder, Janice Voss-Caudill, to let everyone know exactly what you can still be, how you could still access and be able to vote. So I encourage everybody very strongly, this is a critical election for all of us, not only for our local ballots, such as the ambulance district, but when we look at what may happen in our State House, and in Congress, on a national level, Colorado is being targeted by much out-of-state influence and dollars, and we can't let dollars buy this election. The election needs to be determined by our votes, citizens of Colorado.
Thank you, George, Rachel, Steve. I would agree full-heartedly with all the comments that have been said. I want to add a few on the ballot question 1A, the ambulance district. I said, when we approved this ballot question, that most people know if you own a home, the most important payment you make is the mortgage, the second most important payment you make is the insurance on that home. This is an insurance policy for people that are hurt or injured in our community. Community is very important here in this area, and whether it's you that gets hurt, or your neighbor that gets hurt, a friend, a colleague, a coworker, these ambulances save lives. I'd also like to kind of reiterate what Rachel had said. She had said she's been on the Board longer than I have, but in the four years that I've been serving the Board, we've looked at multiple budgets regarding the ambulance district, and we knew this time was coming. We knew that the increased cost of the high-tech equipment that ambulances have was going to surpass the mill levy revenue that's being brought in. So it's crucial that these ambulances have the tools they need to save the lives in the transport and care of the citizens of Picken County. So I would say that I am full-heartedly for this additional tax, small mill levy increase. And one of the lines in this resolution says that this is currently about $4 per $100,000 of home property value, assessed property value, and it will raise to just over $6, just over $6 per $100,000. So it's a very small increase for property tax holders, and again, it's an insurance policy if someone gets hurt. I will accept the motion for this resolution.
I would move to approve the resolution in support of passage of ballot question 1A.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Now we're moving on out of our special, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting, we don't need a motion to go out of the special meeting, just an adjournment by the Chair, and I'm going to go into our work session agenda, which is memos of interest. And first, we have Jody Smith talking about a supplemental for windows in the courthouse.
Over the past decade, the noise in the courthouse has been a problem for the court systems. Their technology has changed a lot over the years, they record every meeting, and even lawn mowers and leaf blowers, the sirens from the police vehicles disturb the courts. There's a lot of background in the courts, background noise from the outside, and because of the construction that's happening at the library, which is scheduled to start in February or March, that kind of triggered us to really look at what we need to do with the courthouse windows. The building is two-foot thick in all the walls, so it's definitely not the structure, but the attic has some openings in it, and then the windows are problematic. It's not only glass, but it's transoms, and there's some voids underneath, so that's how the noise is coming through. And so we're here today to talk to you about the request and why now. We had $150,000 budgeted in the 2015 budget for windows. You will be seeing that this afternoon. 152 windows in the courthouse, and we're still working through some budgets to figure out what it would take to do the entire building, but we need to focus on the first 60 windows, and that needs to be in before February, when we break ground in the library. They will be doing jackhammering and removing the twin tees, which are metal beams in the parking structure. It's going to be very noisy. We will be doing the sound mitigation on those 60 windows to help reduce that noise. We've had a consultant, a professional sound consultant come, and the recommendations for her, from them, is to replace the transom, the windows, and then to also be able to put some kind of covering over the window during court sessions, or we just leave them up for the courtrooms for the duration of the construction. The second part of that is that the city of Aspen is going to be redoing that whole Galena Plaza. The Aspen Sanitation is replacing the sewer line on that side of the courthouse, so there's a lot going on on that side. And so we're looking for this $150,000 to get our permits, the design, the specs, and get those windows changed out or installed by February, when we break ground. Phase two, it would be what's going to be on the budget this afternoon, is that would stay there, and we would address the other half of the windows in the courthouse pending the courthouse plaza remodel, along with some proposed construction that we have on that east side of the building, and by the jail as well, so that we could kind of phase that and work through those before construction starts.
Jody, let me just ask a clarification question, because I know we've been talking about all sorts of things with the courthouse, and we've been moving forward with a lot of them, and windows have been part of our conversation over the last couple of years as well, so this is no surprise. The confusing part is where our 2015 budget is and was, and where this is a supplemental, because it sounds like you said we had budgeted 150, and now we're budgeting 150 now and 150 later, which means we misbudgeted somewhere in the planning process of 100%.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're projecting that we need, it could be over $300,000.
Yeah.
We're looking at the 300 for the 2014, 2015 projects, to get that, those, it's the backside and the east and west side, it doesn't include the front. And so if we have enough money, we'll do the front. If not, we'll leave it as is. So that's our best guess right now. We do have estimates that came in from our consultant, they're in the $400,000, but that's for every window, and we don't have it, we haven't bid it out yet, so we wanted to kind of see where we're at with that. So we are looking to move, to get started with this 2014 part of it, just to get the mitigation done for all the stuff that's happening on the west side of the courthouse, and then we'll deal with the rest of it. You know, we have constraints, you know, courts are really difficult to move around in and do mitigation of any kind in the building, so time is of an essence for us on getting this done, before we impact the courts with the construction noise outside. And the risk to that is that when we're out there with the jackhammers and the cranes, if the courts can't proceed with the noise level that is happening, they'll shut us down, and that can be a huge impact to our daily cost of the construction projects that are happening outside. So we're trying to be proactive, we bumped it up. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, it's really the fact that I think our placeholder was 150, and now our total cost is 300.
Yeah.
I'm going through a window remodel at my employee housing unit right now, and same thing happened to me. I thought I was going to spend X, you get through all this stuff, and it's X times something.
Well, and one of the things that I would just say is that with the courthouse, you know, we're going to be mandated to follow the historic preservation guidelines. Somewhere in the 1980s, many of those windows were taken out, and aluminum-framed windows were put in. Don't have any record of when or how that happened. And so in talking with Amy, with the city historic preservation, you know, she's asking us, and will require us, to have wood frames, and so we've got a different level that we're going to have to meet than maybe what we do on a condo.
Rachel.
That's a good segue. I was just about to ask about the historic nature of the building, and how, is it going to be a very specialized window that will comply with historic preservation guidelines, and then still be the soundproofing?
Yeah. Yes to both of those. And so she's, so what Amy asked us is that we bring it back to historic the best we can.
Right.
You know, and the other part that's a challenge for us in that building is that none of those windows are standard size, none of them are, so you might have 10 windows in a row, and they're not all the same size. And so there's going to be some custom stuff that has to happen with those, and especially, so, yeah.
George.
Jody, one other opportunity, I'm sure that is part of this request, is to make these windows a little more energy efficient.
Absolutely. That's the bonus that I think we get out of this. And I jotted down just before I came up, is that I should actually check the core, and see if we can get any kind of an emergency grant. It's too late to go through any kind of process for phase one, but we would definitely have time to do all of that for phase two, so, to get funding.
Steve.
Yeah, I would echo that, George's suggestion, and even if we had to spend a little more money to add an extra element of energy efficiency, I would go ahead and put extra money in now. Because it's, while it's being done, it's an opportunity to really take a step forward there. I remember hearing that St. Mary's Church is planning a big addition onto the church at some point, and I have no clue what stage that project is in, but the windows on the street side might be just as important in terms of construction noise, and I think it would be wise to check with St. Mary's and see the phasing of their project, and make sure that we get the windows on the street side done before they start that construction project, because we might be getting it from two directions at the same time.
And I think our goal would be, is that if we don't have the funding to do the south, the front side of the building in this two years, is that we would actually be coming to you as part of a budget process, when we do the 2018 budget, and then the renovations that may happen in the courthouse at that time, is then we could address those. But I like that idea, and then also checking with the Hotel Jerome, I've talked a little bit to Sheldon, he's their facilities manager over there, and they just did a whole historic, you know, of replacing those windows, so I think we have some good opportunities to collaborate. One last thing, if I may. Because it's the library project, the construction project, that kind of kicked this off, although it's been an ongoing problem for so many years, at this level, we will be looking at the library to contribute some portion of the funding for the windows on this phase one, and same with Galena Plaza for the city of Aspen, we would be asking and looking for them to make some kind of contribution, because they have the same risk that we do, that their project could be shut down. And they're going to be much closer to the courthouse than we are. So, I mean, it's in everybody's best interest, so we'll be working with them to see how we can do that. And those discussions have happened, we just haven't gotten to the dollar figures yet of what's fair. Anything else?
All in, nod of heads, move forward on this project? Yeah, thank you, Jody.
Okay, thank you.
You've got a lot on your plate to keep things efficient. Future agendas.
Now, I'll try and make this quick, because I know we have a couple open discussion items also. Reminder that Tuesday, November 4th, we've canceled the meeting, recognizing that that is Election Day. However, we will be doing our work session that Thursday, again, in this room, where we will be talking budget again. And, yeah, as you can see, going through, our agendas are starting to fill out more as we get towards the end of the year, they'll slow down again in December, but certainly up until that point, we're pretty filled up on work sessions with budget discussions, and, you know, the regular business we have to do, and our Wednesdays are filling in also. And so I just ask if the Board has any future agenda items.
Any things you'd like to add or comment on, on future agendas?
Not right now, but if I think of any, I'll.
Usually you're good for a couple, Rachel.
I know, I'll hold off on that. The one thing I would like to add to future agendas is, next week, on November 3rd, Monday at noon, will be the Club 20 caucuses, right in the Sister City Room in the basement of Aspen City Hall. And it is for members of the caucus, excuse me, members of Club 20 who live within Picken County, form the caucus. There's really not that many members here at the city of Aspen, and ourselves are the primary. And I have contacted the city to make sure that they have a representative down to cast their vote. I do intend to put my name in to be the county's primary Club 20 representative again. Steve, I don't know if you can make that meeting and want to become one of the alternates? We all kind of struggle.
Yes, I'm planning on being there.
Okay, perfect.
And Rachel, just a point of clarification, because we have that on future agendas at 1:00 PM on the 3rd, but you said noon, it's at noon?
Let me double-check. I was under the impression it was noon, but 1:00 o'clock might be accurate.
Okay.
I was under the impression for a while that it was on Election Day, but it's not.
Oh, okay. If we could double-check.
There was just an email today about that, let me see if I can find that. Loading.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a minor thing.
We can correct that if you find it. Steve?
All right. Open discussion items. John?
Had two items. First, we invited Janice to come in and give an elections update, so, Janice, you got two microphones there to choose from.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Janice Voss-Caudill, and I'm the Picken County Clerk and Recorder, and I would like to update the community on their opportunity to vote in this year's election. So today's Tuesday the 28th, and elections is next Tuesday, November 4th. As of today, we're seven days before the election. If I receive a request for a mail ballot, I will not be sending mail ballots out, but I will be sending letters to individuals, letting them know that we are processing their registration application, or change of address update, and that they will need to go to the polls, the voter service centers, to obtain a ballot to vote on. So with that, I want to review the early voting. We are open in the clerk's office on 530 East Main Street. We are open the remainder of the week, this is October 28th through the 31st, from 8:30 till 4:30 each day. And Monday, the 3rd, we are open also for early voting, from 8:30 to 4:30, that's on the 3rd. In addition, we'll be open this Saturday, November 1st, from 10 till 2. So stop by our office, drop off your ballot, or if you stop by our office and the door is closed, we have a slot in the front door where you can just, you know, place your ballot, and we'll assure that it's processed for you. So early voting's available, please stop by. Also on Election Day, Election Day, we are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the 4th, and the three service centers that are open to assist any voter at any service center they choose to stop at are, in Aspen, the Picken County Clerk and Recorder's office at 530 East Main Street, 7 to 7; Snowmass Village Town Hall on Kern Road; and Christ Church in Basalt. All three are open from 7 to 7. We will, we are able, you're able to vote, you're able to register to vote, update any information, pick up a mail ballot if you choose to do that, and drop it off. Full service on Election Day, 7 to 7. The last thing I'd like to mention is Redstone. For the community of Redstone, we do have a mail ballot drop-off only, for those individuals that want to drop off their mail ballot, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Redstone Church. 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Redstone Church. And we'll have two judges there throughout the day from 7 to 7. And then probably most important for all of you is the returns. What is the outcome? We will be posting bylaw at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and at the end of the night. So for anyone who is at a party, at your home, at a friend's house, wherever, if you go to pickenvotes.com, we will have a link on the front page that takes you into the statewide election night reporting system. The very first thing, at 8 o'clock, we will upload all the information we have to that point, to that election night reporting system. So it's your most convenient way to receive the outcomes to that point. So again, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and at the end of the night. Okay. Do you have any other questions that I might be forgetting?
George?
Two questions. Janice, did you say for the service centers, day of election, you mentioned Christ Church in Basalt?
We, um...
Grease.
It should be Grace Church.
Grace Church, I'm sorry. Thank you. Grace Church in Basalt, right.
On Emma Road. On Emma Road. Okay, thanks. And then, if someone has, has not yet mailed in their mail-in ballot, is it too late to be received? Or at what point, if someone's holding a mail-in ballot, that they should no longer rely on the postal service to get it to you in time?
Thanks for bringing that up, George. Mail ballots must be received in our office by 7:00 PM on Election Day, or at a voter service center at 7:00 PM on Election Day. Anything received at 7:01 or after 7 o'clock, we are, we will not count that ballot.
So if they're not sure whether it's going to make it in time, they can just drop off their mail-in ballot either prior to Election Day or at any other service centers on Election Day?
Thank you for that. Absolutely right. So, early voting, our office is open. We're happy to see people stop by.
As, as well as the Redstone, which is not a service center, just a drop-off place. So there are four drop-off places on Election Day.
On Election Day only.
Yeah. And just to add to what George was saying about mailing them, getting back in, I was just at the post office doing my regular mail, and the fellow was bringing in the mail from outside in the little drop-off boxes down at the post office on Mill Street. And I said, "Oh, he's starting to get a lot of ballots in." He said, "Yeah, we're getting some." And they said, "But you know, a lot of people don't drop them in the local box, so they have to go all the way to Grand Junction first and get processed and come back up." And so I'm not sure if that adds an extra day or two, but to the extent you have a local box, I would use that one first. Not all, not all the more mail is segregated like that. But if you're dropping it in the Aspen post office, use the local box.
People are dropping off their ballots. It was, last week was slow, but it's, yesterday and today's been steady. So.
And just to reiterate what we said earlier about the 1A question, and what I've been telling people, and you correct me if I'm wrong here, is that if you've got a ballot with a question on it, best, safest way is to just answer that question to the best, you know...
If you don't know what district you live in.
If you don't know, and you think you have the right, vote on it.
If you don't know what district it is, answer it. And it won't be counted if you're not in the district. It will be counted if you are in the district. And that, of course, applies to the districts of county commissioners, which are, we have to live within the district, but everybody in the county gets a chance to weigh in on every district for the county commissioner races.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for your time.
One last note. I mean, of course, we'd love a follow-up on this. This is a unique election, in this midterm election. First time we've done this election as a mail ballot, and the last one, the 2010 one, was not a mail ballot. It would be very interesting to analyze those numbers.
Right. It's always difficult.
Afterwards. It's always difficult to know, because different questions are on the ballot, those sorts of things. But I think it's important that we take a look at that afterwards.
Sure. And costs as well. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John?
Only other item, and Brian said that he could probably use 20 minutes. I'll take the last few minutes. I did want to talk to the board a little bit. I thought we might have a little bit more time about open enrollment coming up with the health plans. You're going to be seeing information coming out. We haven't had a chance. Our budget is a little bit out of sync with what we're required to do for open enrollment. But at any rate, I guess the high points are that for this year, there is no proposed change in coverage in our Open Access Plan. That's the non-high deductible health plan. There is a proposed change in premium, however. That one does go up 15%. There is an opportunity for a 5% discount on premiums by participating in wellness initiatives, particularly the health risk assessment and biometric screenings through the health fairs. The county and city are hosting a health fair this Thursday. Any health fair offered by any of the five employers in the Valley Health Alliance, participation in that qualifies employees for that discount. On the high deductible health plan, there is actually no increase in premium, and we're actually able to offer some enhanced benefits with very, very minor impacts to cost. That includes actually lowering the out-of-pocket maximum in the high deductible health plan. Currently, that out-of-pocket maximum is $6,000 for an individual and $12,000 for a family. We were able to lower that to $4,500 for, for an individual and $9,000 per family. We were also able to enhance the prescription drug benefit, so that maintenance drugs, so if you're taking something for high blood pressure, cholesterol, or blood sugar, previously you had to meet your deductible under the high deductible health plan before the plan would start paying for those maintenance. Now, those kinds of maintenance drugs will be covered 100% day one, just like preventative care services are. We are really looking to encourage employees to move to the high deductible health plan, partly because the incentives in the Affordable Care Act right now, particularly the excise tax that will come into play in 2018 on high-cost health plans, will really cause plans like the Open Access Plan to go away and employers to offer more high deductible health plans. The earlier we can get our employees to engage in the high deductible health plans and start contributing to the health savings accounts, the more hedged our employees will be against, you know, having to pull levers for higher deductibles and such. And so, the high deductible health plan this year is offered with no increase to premium, the enhanced benefits, and you can still apply the 5% discount. So you can actually lower your costs by participating in the wellness initiatives through the Valley Health Alliance. I was hoping to have a few more minutes to go over that in more detail, but I wanted to give you the highlights. Overall, we had been budgeting in our budget and five-year plan for a 5% increase. These changes actually bring us within a 2% increase on our overall costs, so we're well within that. We still are budgeting for the 5% increase, only because we're self-insured, and you just, you don't know when the costs are really going to hit. So we try and have a steady curve, if you will, in our budgeting, understanding some years you're going to spend more, some years you're going to spend less. So that was health plans in three minutes. I'm sorry to give that short shrift, but a lot more information is going to be coming out to you on that. And then I will stop open discussion there if we want to move on. I know we're crunched this morning.
Any other open discussion from the commissioners? So our next agenda item is Brian Greifey on our rental car concessions at the airport. This is scheduled for our regular meeting next week. But this is kind of a forward-looking discussion on it. Great. Take it away.
Thank you. I'm Brian Greifey, Assistant Aviation Director for Administration at the airport. This is really just an update to the RFP process for rental car commission. As Rob mentioned, we'll be in front of you next week to go through first reading, but I want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions, see what kind of concerns you have. Overall, this followed the county procurement process. It's the same process that we did three years ago. We do this every three years, because there's a lot of interest in rental car providers at the airport. And again, first read will be next week. Little bit of background. Currently, we have four rental car contracts at the airport. Hertz, National Alamo, Avis, and Budget. In this process, we raised that to five. There's five opportunities in this MOI, primarily because there's enough room. We do have that counter space that's designated as rental car counter space, and we'd like to utilize that to the best extent possible. The current contracts do expire November 30th, November 30th of this year, and that's what really precipitated this RFP process. In the process, we did receive seven responses. So as indicated, there is a lot of interest in being at the airport. And we were able to allocate and already agree on spots of five. No contracts have been signed yet, but based on MAG and percentage of bid, we were able to have first, second choice of the available facilities, and that's been ironed out already. Financial impact of this, looks like it'll be overall a positive impact to what we predicted already in 2015. It's higher than we predicted. With that, over the next two years of the contract, again, it's a three-year contract. There are annual increases as they proposed. It's not a flat 3% or 4% across the board, but they have an opportunity to, say in 2014, this is our minimum annual guarantee, 15, it can stay the same, it can go up, it can go down. The selection is really based on the total of all three years. So it was the amount that they proposed, rather than us putting it on them. With that, that's really just the highlight, and I'd like to hear from you what comments or concerns or questions that you may have.
Questions? Steve?
Brian, did, did the different companies bid on, give these bid amounts on their RFP, from the RFP? Is that how you, you did it?
Exactly.
And then like Hertz is way above, like the Alamo one is sort of half of what the Hertz is. But is that based on Hertz gets more parking spaces? And they know that, and they knew they had to bid higher to keep that same number of parking spaces? Is that kind of how the system works?
Yeah, that's, that's great insight. If you'll look at the exhibits, you'll see, probably the most obvious is the green space on Exhibit B listed as number one. It does have the most amount of square foot available for parking. So there is advantages for a rental car provider to have more. So that's exactly what happened. To bid higher, you have first, first choice of what space you have available, or that is available at the airport, I should say.
And then, it looks like they each get some close-in parking to the terminal and then farther-away parking. It's kind of hard to read the, the whole map without knowing the system there.
And I can step you through that if you'd like. It is confusing. So rental car parking first, which is identified as Exhibit B, the area to the left, 61 total spaces, I believe, is what's identified, those are the rental car ready lots. So known customers that are coming into the airport, either flying in, or actually surprisingly quite a few driving in, from Aspen to rent vehicles or taking the bus, et cetera. Those are a limited number of spots, spread out between all five operators, so they can have a close, convenient spot to their terminal booth, that they, people don't have to walk very far to. The green and orange spots are what's called storage. So this is inventory. This is cars that were just returned, need to be cleaned up. Really, backstock is probably the best way to look at it. And those are shuffled forward to the ready lots by staff when there's a need for those vehicles. And then the last, the difference between the green and the orange really is insignificant. That's just how we could divide up five spots. Just the way we cut up the pizza. And then the last presence that they'll have, and probably the most noticeable, is the rental car booths, which are identified on Exhibit A numbered, Roman numeral one through five. Those were assigned also on MAG. So the first, which is the new incomer into the market, is Go Rentals. That'll be Roman numeral number one. Two through five are exactly the same as they sit today. So Alamo National's number two, Avis is three, Budget is four, and Hertz is the area identified as number five.
Additional questions? George?
So Brian, you also have the Dollar, Dollar Enterprise and Thrifty are going to have a lease agreement for an off-airport permit. Where, where is that? What's, what do they utilize? And, and they obviously don't have a booth space in the airport as well?
Yep. Thanks for pointing out. That's, that's good insight. So there is interest in operating at the airport for rental cars, and this is the same as the previous three years. So we issue what's called an off-airport permit. They don't really have a presence. They can't store vehicles. They don't have a booth, but they are able to pick up and drop off vehicles for passengers. They use the airport to essentially run their business, or at least a portion of their business. So they do pay a concession fee to the airport, or a privilege fee, I believe is what we call it at the permit. It's the same fee as the on-airport, so there's no advantage necessarily, or disadvantage, to being located on or off the airport. It's just they don't have the booth rental. They don't have any, really any place to store vehicles, so they have to find an off-airport location to do that.
Do you know where those off-site locations are?
I really don't.
Have they, has that happened in the past?
So currently, we have two off-airport operators. Go Rentals is actually operating off-airport right now. I do know where they're storing vehicles. They work with the FBO and lease space from, from them. And Enterprise, where they are located, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Just kind of a preview for our regular meeting agenda item, where we'll have to approve these lease extensions or new leases, I guess. Yes, Rachel?
When we do see this on the regular agenda, can you give us a comparison of these bids versus the previous bids when the contracts were awarded?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And then may I point out one, this is an exact apples-to-apples, just overall bid. You'll see on page, I believe it is two of this AIS, that the overall minimum annual guarantee is 162,805 higher than 2014. So it's not the three-year totals, and I'll, and I'll break that up between each car operator and the three-year totals.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
See? We got a few extra minutes in there.
I know, I'm surprised.
You know?
I'll be back in a second, Rob, but.
Yeah. Our next is the District Attorney. So, the microphones are working here. I don't know if you, do you have a presentation?
No.
Okay.
It should be in the packet, hopefully.
Yeah, your memo.
So should I just, close one?
Yeah, yeah. You'll need to probably get close to a microphone.
Good morning. Rachel just stepped away for just a second.
Okay.
So, we're moving to our budget pack. So why don't you go ahead and give us the introduction of the budget, and I'm sure we have a few questions. Thank you.
Sherri Kaloya, the DA in the ninth, would like to introduce Bill Brunworth, who is my office manager, and Steve Arand, who is the victim witness coordinator for the office. Should have a budget in your packet, which shows the budget from 2014 and the changes for 2015. The changes are highlighted in pink. Basically, the bottom line is, is that the budget for Pittkin County, we are asking that we get an increase in the amount of 5.5% in the overall contribution from Pittkin The percentage increase is mainly in salaries. We're asking to give the employees a 3% increase in wages for 2015. You'll see, though, that the wages are actually higher than that, and that's because when we have lost people and replaced them, I replace people at a higher salary level, really trying to increase the level of experience in the office. Currently, there are two attorneys assigned to Aspen, one for district court, one for county court. We're in a bit of a flux, and the one for county court went, decided she wanted to do civil law, so we're going to bring somebody on next week, who will be the county court deputy. We also have a full-time legal assistant who is there, and a victim witness assistant who is assigned up here for most of the, most of the time. She does do some other stuff in Glenwood for a few of the days. This budget, I think, is consistent with what you asked. It's a little bit over what Garfield County asked of us, but Garfield County has told us that they're happy with the budget. Rio Blanco County is a little bit more disgruntled because they see their revenues going down, property tax revenue going down next year, and they weren't very happy with the increase. But I haven't heard much from them as to whether they want to change there. Any questions?
Sherri, how's your retention been for staff, for assistant DAs, for investigators?
The retention for district court DAs is very good. The retention for county court deputies is horrible. They seem to come and go. It's a little bit difficult to say why. You know, this one up here wanted to go into civil law, so she left for a higher-paying job in Denver. We had Jason here, who is very good. He's now in district court as a result of some changes that were made. So I'm hoping with the new hires that we're going to fix that problem, but I admit, it's not been good. The victim witness staff has also been a little bit fluctuating in Aspen. We had a great person assigned up here, and she took a higher-paying job at Garfield and Hecht. We got another person in, and wasn't quite the right fit. So now we have Laura Drexel. She worked in Aspen for a long time, she worked over at the homeless shelter. So I'm hoping that she's going to stay. She likes it at our office, she's familiar with Aspen. Her husband comes up here to Aspen to commute, so I'm hoping that that's going to be a long-term.
She's not new. She's been working with us for a while, and took Aspen over to make that stable.
So how does that impact either new cases or ongoing cases, when you've got people coming and going, and there's sort of a gap or an overlap in terms of being able to take over or following up on current or ongoing cases?
Well, it's, so far, it's not been a problem for Aspen, I don't think. We've been able to hire and get somebody up here pretty much within a couple of weeks, so I don't think it's been a problem. Where it is a problem is with your police departments, because they like to have people that they know getting advice from, and they do ask a lot of questions. And I think that's the biggest impact that has occurred. But I admit, our county court staff, it's tough. Get these new people out of law school, you hire them in. The salary's not bad. It's not great for Aspen, but it's not bad. And they're just figuring out what they want to do. So you will see them move in two to three years, a lot of times. The batch I'm hiring in now, I've got two new ones, have very emphatically indicated they want to remain prosecutors. That is the profession that they've chosen. So I'm hoping to change that, but it's always a guess.
All right, thank you.
Steve?
The budget is based on population, I gather, and like Pittkin County has 21.33% of the population. The other two counties have a higher percentage of the caseload than Pittkin County, so in effect, we're subsidizing the higher rate of cases that you have to handle in Garfield and Rio Blanco counties. So is there anything Pittkin County could do to, without meddling in the affairs of the other counties, that would, could help them to decrease their amount of caseload? I just try to picture people living down there and commuting up here to work, so they have a certain amount of stress in their lives added by the longer commute, or something. Is there anything that you could see that we could do to help them decrease their caseload that would be a cost-effective measure?
I've looked at that. Because of the court scheduling kind of mess that I have, I've got people going to Rangeley on Wednesdays, and their load is not that big, but I got to send somebody all the way there for three Wednesdays a month. And I can't really use somebody else, because Wednesday is a court date in other courtrooms. Now, I could send the Aspen person there, because court here is Tuesday, but the thought of sending an Aspen deputy to Rangeley, no. Yeah, I don't think that that works. So that's why I'm going to assign the person who works in Aspen to Aspen. The last one actually lived in Aspen, so it was a pretty good fit, and she got a pretty good rental rate. The next one, I think, may choose to live in Carbondale. Andrea lives in Carbondale, Megan lives in Basal. If they know they're going to come to Aspen, they may choose to live in Carbondale, which is not as bad of a commute. So it is, it is a struggle. I've tried to get the court to change dates up in Rio Blanco, but it's tough. It's tough.
I'm correct to understand that state statute, that if you do, done by population in terms of the division of the cost. So it's just the way the court system is set up, the CRS mandates that the costs be divided up that way.
Right.
And then the budget be looked at it that way.
Right now, you have a decrease in district court cases, for whatever reason. I don't know that that's going to last. But your district court cases take a long time. They demand a lot of attention, to detail. Victims demand a lot more attention, so it does take more time to prosecute your cases up here. Andrea's good at that, too. So even though there's less cases, she's able to spend more time on them and do a really good job. And I don't think that's going to last. I think we'll fluctuate maybe the other way, or maybe back to where it was last year. You just never know.
And Steve, that has been an issue. I've been in this position since 2006, and it's been brought up at every annual budget hearing, and also by Rio Blanco County, at 8.5%, 8.32% this year, 8.5% last year. They have the same question every year. And, you know, basically what the statute says is that it, the most recent population estimate at the time, you know, that we're preparing the budgets, and that, basically, that the counties provide the infrastructure and the basic office furnishings, the office space and that kind of thing, in each, in each jurisdiction, and then they split the other expenses based on that population share that is in effect for that year. And, you know, I just, it's always been brought up, and I'm sure Rachel will back me up, and when we come here every year, and it's been brought up by the Rio Blanco County Commissioners as well, and it just, you know, I don't really know what the answer to it is. You know, Aspen, I think up until recently, our caseload was pretty much growing here, and county court, I believe it is up over last year, but it's a busy office. And, you know, the one thing, as Sherri pointed out, we, for years, we had a great victim witness person for Aspen, but she worked out of Glenwood. She'd come up here for trials and for dockets, but she was based in Glenwood, and now we're trying to put that person up here to give more resources to the office. But I'd have to agree with Sherri that I do feel, for whatever reason, I think it has a lot to do with the community, the cases here are more, somewhat more labor-intensive for our staff, and probably do take longer to go through the system than you see in Glenwood. And I don't mean just to be taken apart, it might have something to do with the judges as well, because, you know, so I think, you know, there's just some, you know, the restorative justice, I think, is on the horizon here more and used more than it is certainly probably in Meeker. And, you know, so I think, anytime you've had more options in the system, it's going to make the cases take longer to get through the system.
Yeah, Rachel?
Yeah, as I understand it, the only way to change the percentages is to come out with some sort of intergovernmental agreement between the three counties, and to change that, to say your share was going to go up, so ours can go down. Sounds like a pretty difficult negotiation, and maybe not worth the skin for the amount. So, you know, I'm just happy to see the budget that you've presented, and it looks like, you know, unless I'm reading the spreadsheet wrong, it's actually going down for us.
It's going up by 5.0.
Yes, but it's significantly lower than what we were paying in 2011, 2012, and 2013.
And part of that, too, is to change, your share went up a little bit this year, so that also.
Yeah. So, you know, again, I'm comfortable with the numbers that we're seeing.
I just have a curiosity question, because, you know, we look at these budgets from other departments. We obviously, the money kind of flows through the Pittkin County, but it's your budget and your spending. You know, we're looking at about 100, the total budget difference is about $140,000, and primarily in the, well, that's the labor increase. We have decreases everywhere else in that budget. How does the budget get managed for carryover stuff? One of the big savings in our budget is unfilled positions. I mean, you have a position that you're trying to hire for, for two, three months, nobody's getting paid for that position. And does that carry over into the next budget? Does it get used?
It doesn't carry over. We return that surplus at the end of, at the end of every year. So, and since 2006, since I've been in the position, we've returned a budget surplus to the counties every year. So basically, we don't carry it over, we return it.
So I guess that, those numbers weren't in our packet. It would be interesting to see those numbers for final approval of the budget, to say, this is what 2013's budget was, this is what was given back. This is what 2014 budget was, this is what was given back. Because that number's a big piece. I know your planning, you know, this planning, as budget planning is, is your expected expenditures for next year. But it sounds to me like the payroll increases for turnover and payroll, and creating a plan that creates more retention, and I applaud that approach, absolutely. But it also creates a savings if there are positions that are unfilled for periods at times. We've seen, we see it in our county budget every year, so.
Well, for example, in Rio Blanco County, I, one of the deputies terminated, and I hired in a new guy. So the lag in that was about two months, and the new guy that I hired to go up there was an experienced guy who had worked at the office before, known quantity, and I had to pay him $15,000 more, so that the budget gets played with during the year to be able to do that for people.
I know it's a tricky piece to look at, but I think it's an important one, and, you know, it is a, it is a labor-intensive department, as it should be. I'm not criticizing that at all. But so analyzing that budget, I think, is worth looking at.
And I usually do that several times during the year. If somebody's going to be quitting and moving on, okay, how can I hire somebody in and make it attractive, so I hire in quality people? It's a tricky piece.
I do it in my restaurant.
The difference is, though, we have para that we have to deal with, and health insurance, which is ever-changing.
Rob?
Yes.
The sentence in your text where you say that Rio Blanco and Garfield are, their revenue is down overall, and they're asking you to hold the budget, and our revenue is up because of improved sales tax things. What happens if we approve it, and Garfield and Rio Blanco don't approve your budget?
Well, I guess I'll take a stab at that. It's happened before. Garfield, Garfield has already kind of given us their nod that they're okay with the budget. In the, one time in the past, Rio Blanco County, basically, it was, I want to say, not, it would have been 2013, we asked for a 1.5% bonus for our staff, not an increase, a one-time bonus, which was consistent, I believe, with what Pittkin County was doing that particular year. That was following, like, three years of no increases. And so Garfield supported that, Pittkin supported it, but Rio Blanco basically said, you know, "We're not doing anything for our staff, so we can't support it." And their share was pretty low, it was around $5,000 of that salary increase. And so basically, the DA at that time, Martin Beeson, said, you know, "If I commit, then I will fund that portion of it out of my pocket. Are you guys okay with it?" And they gave us their blessing. And so that's how it was handled at that time, and that's the one time that that has actually happened. If they were to say, you know, that there's more than just that one piece of your budget that we're, that we're not going, that we are not comfortable with, and we can't support, you know, I'm not quite sure how we would handle that. You know, I think it becomes an issue at some point on how you decipher the statute. You know, the way I look at it, and I'm not a lawyer, it appears to say, unless you come to some other agreement, which Rachel alluded to, that this is the way it is. So you would have to be able to come to an agreement that another county would pick up that chair, or, but then, you know, what the mechanism would be to, you know, to force that to happen, or, you know, I don't know if I want to go there, to really be honest. I think we would, we would probably try to live somehow with that scenario within our budget, since we've been refining a surplus every year, we might be able to absorb it elsewhere, and hopefully it would be a small, you know, a small amount of, relatively.
It could take a court case, which I am not advocating for, and would not want to do. This happens in other areas, I think, down in the third judicial district. It's happening, and there could be a lawsuit down there, since everybody at that office quit salaries. But...
And kind of related to that, I know nothing about Rio Blanco's budget, but we hear stories of a $100 million surplus that Garfield County is sitting on from their gas revenue. And if they are in fact sitting on that kind of a surplus, and probably their, some of their legal problems that people are having there are, you know, maybe related to a high level of people working in the gas field or something, well, why doesn't Garfield spend a little bit of that $100 million surplus if that's in fact what they have?
Well, in their defense, and I'm saying this a little early, and it may not come to fruition, they did authorize a million-dollar remodel of the office in Garfield, because it is so chopped-up, mishmash, a lot of wasted space. So that is what they spend their capital reserves on, is capital projects. That may not come to fruition, because they've changed their... That may not come to fruition because they've changed their mind in last week. But they are planning on building a new justice center, which we would then move into. So there is a benefit there, something else that they're paying for that's not in the budget.
Rachel?
Yeah, I would just add to that, you know, Steve, we all have our own budget issues and someone could look at our budget and say, well, you're sitting on a surplus of X, but we know what we're going to need it for in future years and things like that. I don't believe we should go there at all. Garfield County faces additional issues with declining real estate values and their mill levy collections declining and a rebate case with the state over revenues that were given to them for future oil, mineral gas severance tax leases. And then the leases were pulled, but the money's already been spent and there's cases going forward about whether they have to refund that to the state or not. And it's just, that's like a third rail to talk about how do you manage your money versus how do we manage our money and who should put in more? So I would strike that comment from the record myself.
George.
I strongly agree with that. I don't want another county to get into our pocketbook and I don't think we should be getting into another county's pocketbook.
And if it matters, I support this budget going forward, so that's.
Is this a decision-making point or does this come up in our regular budget process?
So at this point, I think it'd be what we typically put in our presentations as the decision point, what staff direction, what to include in the final budget. The budget isn't finalized until we adopt the final resolution in December.
So it looks like a nod aheads across the board Commissioners. You've got support across the table here.
Thank you.
Rob, can I just, if you guys have a couple more minutes, I did just want to see if we could give you some feedback because I know you're from reading the paper and I live in Picken County, you know, so I keep up with what's going on here. And I know you're looking at some facilities improvements over the next few years.
You might want to just get a little closer to the mic. Zach, how are we doing with sound there? Yeah, a little bit, a little closer would be better. Yeah, thank you.
Should I repeat?
Yeah.
Just to, yeah, I think we just wanted to, because I know that the county is making it a goal to look at your facilities over the next few years and to look at upgrades and that kind of thing. And I, so, and I want Sherri and Steve Arand, who's our victim unit director, I brought him partly because some of the issues that we have with space are issues that actually end up where we can't comply with the Victims' Rights Amendment, which we're mandated to comply with. And he's kind of an expert on that scenario. But, you know, you probably are aware, we were previously on the first floor of the courthouse and about a year and a half ago, 2000, early 2013 February, I think it was, we were asked to relocate, which we were happy to do. We understand the issues that the county, all the counties we have that we earn in our jurisdiction have issues with space and where to put all the staff and room for growth and appropriate spaces and that kind of thing. And so, so we did move and we moved down to the basement. We swapped with the Sheriff's Office, I'm sure you're all aware of that. And, you know, I'm sure also with the murder case that we had, a lot of the limitations of those spaces, not just for us, but obviously for the Sheriff's Office, you know, became apparent. And I know you've heard them from many different sources. But, you know, some of the things, and I preface this by saying, we've also been working with your staff who's going through a master planning process and has met with us a couple of times to get input on future possibilities for our space and that kind of thing. And in fact, right before we came over this morning, we met with Jody and Dave and the staff in terms of some of the stuff that's on the horizon with the city, with impacts on our operation and then with longer range things for the county. But, so, you know, just kind of wanted to, while Sherri's here, while Steve's here, give you a little bit of feedback. You know, some of the things that we saw that during the, you know, some of the, some of the court proceedings that we had going on with the murder case and other cases that we had were, you know, not having appropriate places to temporarily house a victim or a witness waiting to be called up to court to testify. You know, we had one case in particular where there were three witnesses being called to testify, but there was some personal issue between two of the witnesses and we couldn't have them together and trying to keep them separated. And, you know, we're sticking people in our office where we start running into problems with our ability to safeguard the criminal justice records that we are, that we are possession of and that we have to be able to maintain the security of. You know, because if you have somebody waiting in a small office area and people are talking about a case or, you know, an officer might be talking to one of our staff there, you know, it gets hard to, to be able to, you know, provide, you know, the kind of privacy that's necessary, particularly with victims of cases when we bring a victim in and we can't provide them with a proper, you know, place to wait. And so I'm just trying to kind of like kick that off a little bit and maybe let Steve, you know, you know, talk about some of the issues that we saw, like for instance during the Styler case. But, but I do know that we, and a number of, a number of times, we saw the limitations in terms of being able to adequately temporarily house the people that were waiting to go to court to testify and so.
Yeah, we do need a conference room. Could be shared with probation perhaps, but we do need a conference room. The space that we had at the Sheriff's Office wouldn't have done it either. So we're not complaining that this made this happen. And we've talked about it with Dave and getting some more space so that we are compliant with the VRA.
More than anything, trying to say that we appreciate that that's a focus of your, of your direction. If things go the way that you want to financially, to be able to do that in the next few years, I think that's really what we wanted to say is that we're very happy to have what we have and to have the proximity that we have. But, you know, for you to know that there are issues that could be addressed in those plans that could really resolve a lot of those issues.
But the sheriff is happy with us, so.
It's great to get direct feedback, you know, from the, from the source. That's obviously what we've been hearing from John and Jody and our facilities people. So it is the direction, I believe, the board is, will be talking about it a lot during this budget period for the long-term planning. Of course, a lot of this is in out years, but.
It takes a long time to move it forward and do it right, so.
A lot of moving pieces too. And I appreciate the input.
Thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, I've, I've heard other county commissioners from other counties around the state saying, well, it is a courthouse and it, there, a lot of them are dedicating more space in their courthouse to the court system. And, and that's the direction we're headed to that, you know, we're anticipating that the whole courthouse will be for the DA's office and the court system will, you know, within a few years period here.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
We appreciate your time.
Zach, we're scheduled for a lunch break here back at one, I'm sorry, 12:45.
Perfect.
Okay, welcome everybody. Welcome to our 2014 budget tour. We're going from building to building to find various places to meet. And now we are in the City Hall chambers for today's meeting. And we did an overview of the budget. Now we're getting into our various core focus groups. Today we are tackling flourishing, natural and built environment. And John, take it away and lead us off.
All right, thank you, Rob. Well, we've got a pretty aggressive schedule today. We've got a pretty lengthy, but I think, interesting budget presentation. And in the core focus meetings, what we do is we dive a little bit deeper into each department's budget requests and challenges. And these are the presentations where we'll put specific decision points in front of the board. Obviously, no decision is final until the final budget resolution is adopted in December. But this is really the board's opportunity to step back and give staff direction for what should and should not be included in the budget. And so as always, as we look at how we allocate our limited resources, we really look to our strategic plan as our really guiding document to how we are going to allocate those resources. We have three core focus areas and that's how we break our budget up. And as you pointed out already, Rob, today, we're focusing on the flourishing, natural and built environment, which includes a focus on conserving natural resources in the environment, responsibly maintaining county assets, ease of mobility via safe and efficient transportation systems and a well-planned and livable built environment. And so you're going to be seeing and hearing discussion today about how our budget addresses all of those issues. What's different this year, and you're probably by December going to be tired of hearing it, but you're going to hear more of it today, is a lot of the theme in this year's budget is how do we fund the basic infrastructure needed to support the whole portfolio of county services that supports the programs and employees that really help us forward our strategic plan. And so you're going to hear a lot about the facilities proposals and information technology proposals and also about our staff and people resources threaded into the discussions today because that is really, right now, what we see as our biggest challenge as an organization in terms of continuing today and into the future, being able to meet the expectations of our strategic plan. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Connie.
Here we have a list of the different departments and funds that we'll be discussing today. You see there are many departments under the general fund section. And our plan for the day is to spend about the first half of this meeting talking about the different general fund departments and the capital plan. And then we'll take a short break and come back with our four different funds that are a part of this grouping, open space, solid waste center, healthy rivers and streams, and the transit sales and use tax. Grouping these different funds and departments under the flourishing, natural and built environment is a little bit artificial sometimes. There are funds and departments that promote our strategic plan in some of the other core focus areas also. But for the purpose of grouping to have budget discussions, we have put them where they have the strongest affiliation. And so that's why you see these departments and funds listed here today. These departments and funds lumped together make up about 43% of the overall county proposed budget for 2015. That's a fairly large share because we have, do have a lot of capital projects in here. Most of our capital fund is listed in this section of our core focus budget discussions along with the solid waste center, open space and trails. And then as you see on this pie chart, the large share is the transit sales and use tax. Now this fund does have flow-through money. One and a half percent sales tax from the county goes directly to transportation. And so about half of that pink pie slice that you see for the transit sales and use tax actually is just straight pass-through money to Aspen, Snowmass, and to Raffdale. For more detail on any of these departments or funds, there is a section in your budget binder, the tab says department detail, and you can find some other information in that section if you wish to go further. Here we have a chart that compares the 2013 actual expenditures for each fund and department with the 2014 original budget and then our 2015 proposed budget, just to give you an idea of how much the expenditures are, the ebb and flow through different years as different projects come up. And the 2015 numbers on this table do reflect the buy-up request that we are recommending. And so if there are no questions on these first slides, we will move on to our first, actually the fourth success factor, which is well-planned and livable built environment. And we will pass the presentation over to Cindy Hoobin and her crew.
Hi, thank you. I'm Cindy Hoobin with the Community Development Department. And here's our staff to help with the presentation today. But would first like to start by just talking about how we fit in with the three main goals of the county this year as far as facilities, information technology, and compensation with staff. But we started off with a slide to show you that our, our space is a little cramped on the third floor of City Hall. And I think Michael Alsley had made a comment that some people have spent their entire careers in inadequate space and that would be me. But we, we do have a wonderful crew and everyone piled into a new office. We moved some, we scanned some plans and were able to figure out another meeting, another office space. So here's a picture of that new office space. Environmental Health is still located out at the Public Works Department where we have two of our staff. And we find that that is challenging at times for us because we work so well together when a permit has to go through all the different phases of building, planning, environmental health, zoning, that we're able to be co-located. So we hope to have that in the future. And that's how we fit in with the need for space. From an information technology perspective, we're very lucky because we were able to start off in community development with a new implementation strategy for the tracking system for our building permits and planning. And we're in the throes of implementation of the, what we call the CSI software package, which will not only connect our planning, building, zoning, but it also integrates other county departments as well. So we hope to get some efficiencies in our permitting system throughout the county by the use of CSI. CSI will also allow us to become hopefully more paperless, not just for our department, but for the public in general. There'll be electronic submittals, people won't have to get in their cars. We'll be affecting some of the other built environment and natural environment strategies or goals by having people be able to submit electronically, not have to come into the office to make payments, that sort of thing. And be able to also interact with one another, back and forth across the computer for various needs and changes in permits and plans. So that'll be helpful. Community development staff resources, we have a staff that requires many certifications and/or degrees and these, these jobs are sought after in our, in our development area in the, in the whole valley. So we feel that compensation and a healthy working conditions are very important as well as overall organizational appreciation. And we have, we have a lot of food that keeps us happy in community development. There we showed the picture.
Training table.
Yes, exactly. But we don't have that table anymore. That's an office. So just so you know, we have a limited space, we have a limited space for donuts, so. And we'd also like to thank you for reinstating the positions that we have this year in community development. And Brian and Lance will get into that a little bit more in detail about how that has really measurably increased our efficiencies this year. But we do have a pending request that'll be at the end of your morning or at the end of, before your break regarding the pending request for a front desk seasonal position. And that would be triggered by our activity levels when we get there next spring. We may, you may see us again asking for that front desk backup position. It was so helpful this year that we were able to have that and to keep things moving. And Lance, did you want to add something?
You'll recall that in this year, 2014, the board was able to reinstate two positions in community development that we lost in 2009. That was in a. That was a second zoning officer position, which we previously had, and a second plans examiner, building inspector, combo building inspector position that we had had up till 2009. We were fortunate to get those reinstated because of our activity levels in 2014. And those positions were finally filled about in July.
Pull the mic over to your, thanks. It works, it works for grassroots, it doesn't amplify.
So we can hear you fine.
Great.
Just the TV guy.
So those two positions, we finally got on board about in July of this year. And Brian will tell you how we've already really lowered our turnaround time on building permits, which was the whole idea for doing that. But what was kind of interesting in the way that that has worked to be beneficial to reducing the building permit time is the fact that we have two zoning officers now and two plans examiners, combo inspectors, that one can cover for the other. And so what we have found is that one day a week, we have a zoning officer, and one day a week, we have a combo plans inspector working from a remote location, usually home, where they take a whole basket of plans home with them and, in an uninterrupted fashion, can get six, seven permits out in one day. Whereas if they're in the office, phone calls, walk-ins, all the cluster that goes on around our office, they simply were not able to be that productive. And so just having backups in those two positions so that there's always somebody in the office, but the availability for someone to concentrate outside of the office on reviewing plans has just changed everything for us. And Brian has some documentation of those numbers. But we feel that the reinstatement of those two positions was one of the most positive things that's happened with ConDev since 2009.
And since it seems timely, I could jump in with those numbers. I ran the numbers pre-July when we brought in the two positions and post-July up until the current time. And when I did the comparison, we found that a single-family residence was taken, as we predicted when we asked for the new positions, about 10 weeks. We've kind of predicted that with our workload that was pending and where we were heading, we were looking at a 10 to 12-week turnaround, which we didn't feel like was going to be acceptable to anyone as far as a turnaround time. And so since we brought on Jan, we've actually cut that time in half. We're down to five-week turnaround time for the last half of this year. And if we look at the overall year-to-date average, single-family residents are taking eight weeks. So that number's being pulled down because of the better statistics at the end of the year. So by year's end, we should be at a much better turnaround time, the four to six that we were hoping to predict with the help, so.
Is this all in conjunction with the new software stuff that you were talking about?
Not yet. That'll be even better.
That hasn't even, I mean, we've been talking about getting the training and getting up and going with that, but it hasn't really been implemented fully at this.
Correct.
Okay, so that should bring it down even more.
Well, there'll be a learning curve, of course.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
I mean, I think it's been three years we've had that in our budgets, yeah.
Is it three?
George?
Brian, we still, even though you're showing better efficiencies in your department, along the process, applications can still get stuck, whether they have to go to some outside agencies. And how can we address that to try to help ensure that they don't get stuck somewhere else and that delays the whole process?
And CSI will help integrate that as well because that's going to be web-based, and all those referral agencies will have direct access, kind of all at the same time, able to be doing their review. So hopefully, we won't have to be sending physical plans down to Town of Assault, to the fire marshal down there will actually just be able to say, here's a new set of plans uploaded to your system for your review, and that system will all be automated. As soon as someone does their CSI input at home, it'll send that information out to every referral person who's involved in that referral. So that is where we hope to see in the future where that's going. Right now, we are working, we've been working really well with the water department and sanitation department to kind of clarify what their needs are and making sure that their needs are being met better in the referral process so that if they don't want a permit to be issued until the fees are paid, we hold a permit in-house until we get proof that those fees are paid. And by teaching the public that we're not going to move forward until that happens is actually helping them to start doing some of that legwork that really should fall back on the applicant to go out and make sure that their fees are paid where they are instead of someone from the building department have to call and say, have you paid your fees? Here's where you need to go and explain that to them in a lengthy process. We're trying to train them a little bit more upfront and getting that all front-loaded to kind of expedite that process at the rear.
So, but even with a CSI where all agencies can get the same information at about the same time, is there an expectation that you put on those other agencies that you would like to see them respond to within a certain period of time so it doesn't get buried under other applications and other work that they're involved with?
We've not taken the step to go to outside districts or agencies like a fire district or even a school district review or whatever the review might be to give them a deadline, but that might be something that we could work on with the board and ask for your help in requesting that those districts work with us.
Yeah, I would like to see that happen, just to, I mean, we're creating efficiencies here, but it's only going to work if it goes all the way down the line as well.
It's tough at times because there's not a designated staff person who's only doing plan review. They have to try to mix our plan review into all the jurisdictions they're working with plan review and their other duties. So it's hard for us to know what their timeline's going to be at any given time because of their own workload issues that they have. So, I mean, as we address that, we'll run into some of that difficulty.
Rob?
Rachel?
You know, just tailing off that comment, you know, maybe there's more of a discussion of a protocol that you can expect as opposed to, here's a deadline. But to be able to have them, you know, through a conversation, say, you know, if we get it to you, can we expect it back in 10 days or seven days or 14 days? Just so there's a general understanding of expectations as opposed to a deadline. Because, you're right, workloads vary and we don't manage their workloads.
Steve?
Adding back in the two full-time positions, what did that do to your space constraints? Is it like totally crazy now? Are there any possibilities of, when I look at all your files of stuff that, I'm sure our RAN stuff is in there somewhere, stuff that could be stored at the Public Works or something in a storage unit or something that you could create more space on a temporary basis to alleviate space problems?
Actually, those files, and I'll speak for environmental health too, we use those on a daily basis. We pull files, and that's one of the reasons we can be efficient with people who walk in off the street who have questions we don't even anticipate coming up. We're able to pull the files, sit down, talk with them, or have them go through the files in order to get files out of file finders or at another location. We're not providing that service. Plus, these are really important files that I don't think at this point there are any facilities that we would trust to house the files. We are doing the best we can to scan at this point. When new files come in, we scan those files. We're not, we're trying not to get further behind, but it's pretty important for a number of reasons to have those files scanned electronically and available electronically because so much of our work is in the field. And if we have them electronically, we're able to pull up information anytime we go out, some unanticipated site visit or an issue that might come up with the design of a septic field or anything. So our goal is to get those digitally stored. So we have had those off-site before, and we are cleaning out, based on the archive requirements, what we can, especially on the building side. But with the planning files, those are our historical data that we don't really lose. So we need to, we need to get those scanned. And I don't know of a safe spot to put those, but maybe there's one, maybe there's some safe storage, but.
We're building new building for you as fast as we can. Maybe, maybe you won't retire before.
I don't know. It's going to be, it's going to be a close, a close call. Close call, close call. If I could move on now, just to the administrative, administration section, we are continuing with those efficiencies like we just talked about. And also this year, you will see a request for, as part of the 2015 budget, to update some of the more minor fees, if you will, in our system that haven't been updated since 2009. We are not tackling the large fee schedule for the building department, fee schedule, until we have a chance to come back and talk with you. And so that will be a little bit further down the road. But there are incidental fees that we have not looked at, like we say, since 2009, which we feel we really do need to bring up to speed. So we are going to incorporate those, and you'll have a chance to see those specifically, but during the 2015 budget. Things like our zoning fees, things like our fees for hourly basis on building permit resubmittals, things like that. So, and I think what we're doing is we're going up $12 an hour on the planning fee, which is still lower than some other jurisdictions, but.
An increase of $12 an hour or going to $12?
An increase of $12 per hour. So, and the way we see it is that we're not even really keeping up with what would have been, you know, through the years, you know, a 3% or 4% increase since 2009.
Rachel?
Cindy, there was some discussion in previous years about are there ways that simpler permits can be processed with less hours expended? And that may also, I think, fall a little bit in some of the simpler special events, you know, because that's where, you know, we really see that reimbursement fee when we do it out of our contingency fund for some of the nonprofits and all. I'm just wondering, can you report back on progress to segregate the simpler fees instead of a baseline that is no matter what, you know, even if it's, you know, a repair to a shed or something like that?
That's part of the discussion we want to have in the larger discussion. The board at one point said, we'd like to see the easier applications have lesser fees associated so we don't have just a normal graduated scale to propose to you on that building permit schedule. And you had hit a mark, I think it was $250,000 and below in terms of permits, that those have a lesser fee attached for those $250,000 or less value permits. So we will be proposing that type of a schedule to you.
And we did adopt some land use code changes just a couple months ago for some exemptions to site plan review where the minimalist types of development, we determined, didn't warrant the time involved for the applicant or the fee that was required. And that has just been effective for a couple months. But just yesterday, I exempted my first garage from site plan review. And that was someone's building a garage next to their house with no constraints and no scenic issues involved that go directly to building permit, where before it would have been about a $2,500 site plan review that really wouldn't have gained anything other than process and would have taken 60 days. And so we were definitely trying to
Move in that direction.
Take some of those smaller things out of the process so we can concentrate on the bigger things and get people through our process faster. There'll be some revenue
Changes.
Changes because of that, but we think it's worth it.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear there's progress being made on that front.
So, back to the building division. I'm going to let Brian take over.
Sure. If you go to the next page of the slides where the chart is shown, you can see where we're kind of standing year-to-date. 2014 on the far right is where we are as far as number of single-family residents, number of additions and remodels. And then I went as far as to look.
Your chart's different.
Oh.
The chart in your packet is just a little different than the chart up on the screen. We wanted to point out that we made a mistake on that very last line of the demolitions. It says 47 demolitions in your packet, and it's 17 demolitions.
Yes, sorry. But going back to those numbers, I went ahead and ran a query in our tracking system to see how many we had in-house single-family residents. And there's another 23 sitting on the racks waiting for review and pending review. So if we add that 23 to the 26, we're looking at 49 single-family residence permits for 2014, so. That's if they all were to issue.
That takes us back to 2007, levels of new single-family residential.
Which was, once again, kind of the workload predictions we had made on where we were heading and why we needed that additional help earlier in the year. And then the biggest thing for the building department is we're going into code adoptions. 2015 codes are out and available, so we're starting our review of the 2015 codes. We'll be hoping to get those before you by early part of 2016 for adoption, so.
Steve?
Would the building code updating in 2016, would that include like a green energy code kind of things would be included in that?
We knew you'd be asking that question.
Okay.
Yes, what we're looking at.
Looking forward to that.
Definitely, definitely, yeah, we all are too. We definitely are going to adopt the traditional International Energy Conservation Code. But along with that, we want to do an integrated model where we're going to take the energy code and kind of integrate some of the sustainability's information that we have in our Efficient Building Program, and also work in conjunction with the planning, so it's kind of front-loaded in the planning side of things, and work with Core and some of the other departments to kind of do a joint, kind of an environmental attack with energy code and sustainability all kind of in one big package. And along with that too, we hope to rewrite the RAMP program and get some feedback, probably have some work sessions definitely in the coming year on where we want to take RAMP and some of the discussions we've had prior as far as how we want to look at that model as well.
You may have heard of the green energy code, building code, and that code has a lot of different sections. It starts with land use. And so we're taking that approach without a scoring system because none of us are interested in that detailed of a scoring system. We just want to make sure that we're hitting all the right marks, that once a house is contemplated, that it's sited well to take advantage without anything else other than just citing it properly so that maybe it won't need a snowmelt driveway, or maybe it won't need additional energy uses based on just the orientation to the sun as one look. And then beyond that, where we go with the actual physical building elements in the energy code, we'll go into the building codes.
One thing we learned from the Efficient Building Program was that there's a lot of items that kept coming up. And even though there was a point structure to it, there was a lot of people that, just by nature, and found what worked for their construction projects, started implementing certain aspects of the Efficient Building Code. So we hope that maybe by having some mandates or some compliances, that maybe that's a better way to address the efficiency, instead of a point structure, which is so hard to track and so difficult to keep managed.
As far as planning and zoning, I think you all know because we've talked a lot about it, 2015's going to be a big year of master plans where staff is working with all of the caucuses to find areas where the master plans can be updated, where they need to be updated. That will ultimately involve in code changes because there will be policies and guidelines and standards that will come out of master plans that will have to ultimately be implemented in the land use code. So we'll be doing as we always do with you, coming to you regularly through the year with groups of land use code amendments. But we're also realizing that the land use code, believe it or not, in 2016 will be 10 years old. We still refer to it as the new code, but at 10 years in 2016, I think we're probably going to have to be looking beyond continuing to do patchwork amendments and perhaps putting together a new code, perhaps, with a lot of these new sustainability and environmental concepts that currently we really don't have. As far as land use applications, just so you know, we've been very steady since 2009, which was the Since 2009, which was the low of lows in terms of land use applications, where we had 108, we've pretty much had in the 140 applications a year, every year since then. And even though the building, as you saw from the building permit data, even though that has really skyrocketed, the land use applications have stayed very steady at that 140 a year level. I anticipate that to be pretty much the same. So the revenue coming from the planning side does not anywhere near increase as the revenue has from the building side. And that is very consistent, and I can't really see much change in that. I don't see a volume change in land use applications.
Kurt Dahl with Environmental Health.
Thanks. So in environmental health, our story is very similar to the building department. Our construction permits for septic systems will be above our 2013 level. Same with our use permits, we should be at or above our 2013 numbers. Our consumer protection inspections contract, that remains pretty stable. The only increase we've really seen there is a little more demand with special events and inspecting food vendors there. Our use permit process has been in place now for five years, and I think it's been very successful. It's doing exactly what we intended it to do. We're identifying and correcting issues with existing septic systems and doing a better job of protecting public health and water quality and identifying and correcting those problems. In 2015, we are going to implement our renewable permit process that we adopted with our new septic regulations. And I think that's going to be another step forward in protecting water quality. We continue to collaborate with the planning department on natural resource issues that impact Pittkin County. We have several ongoing pieces that we're working on. And I see in 2015, probably two or three already, processes that we'll be commenting, collaborating with as well. The other piece in 2015 that we're looking at is changing our noise code and trying to iron out any wrinkles that we have there.
Rachel?
What do you see as the process for that? Are we going to have a work session on it as you start to look at changing that noise code, or how?
Yeah, what I see is, at this point, I'm going to start with looking at a few example noise codes. I've talked with the planning department and the building department, a few others, code enforcement, about the, you know, potential issues that they see with our code and where we'd like to go with that. And then I'm now going to start looking at, you know, a few example noise codes. I've pulled in EPA document on model noise codes, I'm going to review that. And then we'll get together and actually make some, have some discussions about our noise code, and then we'll come to you with a work session and go from there.
Thank you.
So to wrap up with community development, we do have one buy-up request that will show up later in your agenda, but it's a pending request. It's not to be implemented until we check back in with you during probably late spring to see if we have the volumes that we think we'll have that would warrant a backup position at the front desk. Are there any questions for me?
Steve?
The part-time front desk position, would that, I mean, I could see that that would free up people who have really important things, like here's Brian at the front desk reading somebody in the picture. So would that, the purpose of that be to free up people to work on their specialty and not having to be at the front desk so much?
Well, that always plays into it, but oftentimes people are, it's backed up two or three people deep for submittals or people coming to get the issuance of their permits. And there's just a lot of data entry that needs to go into our CSI system. So we're trying not to have people wait too long at the front desk. Plus, you know, the phone rings, someone's at the front desk, and there's research being done at the back in order to help a member of the public. So we find that it's just, the front desk is a tough position. You have to be a multitasker, and people aren't always happy that come to the front desk. And then there are times when it's just overwhelmingly busy where you have to be very specific because the data that you input is very critical to what our output is. And so it's one of those jobs where to have backup, it's important to have that mental kind of backup and release as well as just being able to be available for the public.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we're moving on to another success factor area of this core focus of our strategic plan, responsibly maintained and enhanced county assets. And we are going to mainly focus on our capital plan in this section. So next we'll have facilities.
Jody Smith, I'm the facility superintendent, and...
Dave Detwiler, her underling.
So, Facilities manages and does all the capital planning for 20 buildings, including translator sites. So we are going to just kind of focus on the facilities, the IT and the people in this session. Some of our recent successes were a new generator, well, actually, a whole new improvement power line up at Elephant Mountain Translator Site, which you are all familiar with. And then we're just punch listing our library roof replacement. So those will be done, that'll be done this week. And then, of course, we are still continuing with the library design and permitting for that construction to start in February. Some of the problems that we encounter with many of the buildings, but particularly with the courthouse and the plaza. The courthouse has inadequate, the space is just inadequate to hold current functions for staff and meetings. There's poor security in the courthouse. You can't separate the justice functions from public and staff. And then even after the APD moves out in 2018, we still have space constraints due to historic designation. It's not that flexible space, and there's still needs that are going to happen for the courts in the future. The plaza, as you know, you live in that building. The layout is really ineffective, not very flexible. The HVAC system is at its end of use for life. The IT system is, the IT system needs to be brought up to current standards, and you'll see a photo here of wiring. And then it's not well insulated, as everybody knows with the cold. And there's just, there's just no opportunity to bring in community development or any other functions or offices in that building. Again, this is community development up in, here in City Hall. They're doing everything on countertops. You can see Suzanne's office in the corner there, where it is very tiny. It's the smallest office in the county. We have environmental issues. We still have asbestos, some of asbestos in the courthouse plaza. There is some in courthouse as well. You can see here, we have systems that are old and failing from concrete cinder walls to inadequate wiring. We've had leaks in different buildings and structures over the past. And what we're proposing is solutions for, that will work towards fixing all of these and really focusing on energy efficiency, providing that workspace for people so that we can have better work environments, better processes for the use of the space, reduce the maintenance costs with newer systems, less failures, provide better security for both public and staff, and then adequately designed for the future. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
So we've talked several times about these proposed construction projects, so I won't go into a lot of detail. A new 18,000 to 22,000 square foot sheriff and admin building that will likely be connected to the courthouse plaza. The project would include essentially a complete gut and remodel of the courthouse plaza to make both of those buildings be highly efficient. Once those are complete and the APD moves out of the courthouse, we would do some remodel in the courthouse, both to improve security, energy efficiency, and to try to accommodate their needs as best we can, given the constraints in that building. We've shown you kind of conceptually where that footprint might be. Again, that would be tested by our design team once we get them on board and would be subject to further conversation, but that's the concept. Again, the next slide, we've given you my cheap version of what something could look like, and this is not it. It's just giving you a sense of some massing of how that would fit in the back of the Veterans Park. Next slide gives you some timeline. Again, we've talked about most of these, but we're...
One second, Rob.
Yes, Rachel?
Small correction, behind Veterans Park, in the parking lot.
Correct.
You said in Veterans Park.
Oh, behind.
Behind Veterans Park.
Yes, it might touch the grass, yes. It would be...
But it's primarily in the parking lot.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I apologize. So timeline is, we've already started drafting the proposal request for the design team to get that process started. We envision first of next year, developing some concepts and budgets that we would bring back to this group for further discussion and evaluation to make sure we're headed in the right track. The rest of 2015 would be spent doing the design, getting public input, working with the user groups. Early 2016, bring a final budget and final cost back to you all for approval. Start construction in March of 2016, and we're envisioning it being a 12-month process right now. And then, once that's all moved in and APD moves out, 2018 would be the courthouse remodel.
Rachel?
It doesn't have to be answered at this time, but we just heard today about the distraction and noise caused by construction that may interfere with the courts activities. And I think that while we're building this new facility behind Veterans Park, we might have the same sort of issues for our own work and workers for that time period. And even just thinking of our meeting room where we meet now, when they start working on something in that back lot, it can be pretty troublesome. And so, you know, we're going to make sure, we need to make sure we've really thought through that activity, whether there's times we can plan for more work-at-home days, and that's when they do the heavier, noisier stuff, or whether we, even as a board, will need to meet somewhere else during that construction time period. So, you know, we're going to have to look at the logistical planning of ongoing operations during the construction phase pretty intently.
The last timeframe we looked at, correct me if I'm wrong, was a relocation of offices during that major work, actually doing them both at the same time. And so Plaza 1 and the building of this new structure would happen concurrently. And we would, we had a, as part of our budget, we had rent money for relocation somewhere, which we haven't really determined yet.
Yeah, and for how long?
And how long, yeah.
Everything like that. So anyhow, you're right, Rob, thank you for reminding me on that. But it's still, we don't know where those facilities will be, and it's, you know, that end of the planning, I guess, is just as important to me as the construction project.
And I'd just note that the relocation did not include the courthouse, and so we are paying attention to the noise mitigation on that side of the building, just like we are in the Galena Plaza side now.
Correct. Any other questions?
Okay, and just to wrap up, facilities, we do have a buy-up request for an administrative assistant FTE. This would be changing our part-time employee from 24 hours to 40 hours. That is a recommended, that will be recommended by the budget committee and will be in your packet at a later date, or later on this afternoon. And we will be coming back, if that's approved, then we'll be coming back in the next few weeks with a buy-up, asking to implement that early.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Next, we have roads.
Great. We are here to talk about our road plan. And I'd like to talk a little bit about, overview our Public Works organization as well before we get into that. And it's an exciting time. Every year, budget seems to argue us and we have to get into it. This year, there was an excitement about it for Public Works just because I think we are looking to the future so we can plan better. And we can get away from some of the mundane operations that we're having to take on over the last 10 years. I think we're really in a mode of operation right now with fleet and road and bridge, transportation and the landfill, to look to the future and to make things better rather than just trying to maintain what we have. And so you'll see that theme throughout this presentation, including when solid waste comes up later in the day. But to talk a little bit about our facility at Public Works, you know, this is a 1991 vintage building. And right now, we house a little over 20 employees with Public Works, environmental health, open space and trails. And this year, we housed our evidence storage at Public Works. And so we seem to be a little bit of a catch-all for what's needed by the organization. With regard to our roads, we have 265 miles of road. They are maintained by a road and bridge department of 10 employees. Bert Pierce and GR Fielding, our county engineer and inspector, take care of the roads from a capital improvement standpoint. We have five total employees with Public Works, myself, Melissa Sever, GR Burt, and Mike McAndrews, who runs the road department. Between these five people, we maintain the roads, and we also take care of a very customer-oriented weed control department, where we take care of the weeds on county roads, county lands, and we give money to citizens so they can maintain their weed problems as well. I think what, the general shift again is to increase our quality, to look to the future, and to become more customer-oriented organization. GR is going to get into our road program and talk about where we're going to move, hopefully, in the future with that. And you'll see some requests coming down through this budget process. We hope that you approve for the future of the county.
Thanks, Brian. I'm GR Fielding, I'm the county engineer. And we're coming off a couple of really exciting years in my program, where we've spent a lot of money on capital improvements. The two best examples of that, projects that we're wrapping up right now, one being the AABC, which hadn't seen much improvement really since the '70s, when it was initially built. And we got an opportunity to add sidewalks and other pedestrian amenities and to improve the drainage through that whole area. And right next to that, the pedestrian underpass, we got to finish up, and we're going through all of our project closeout right now. And it has been a very beneficial addition to that community. It gets used extensively, and we really think that we made a pretty significant safety improvement to that community. This year, we also completed Maroon Creek Road intersections at Highlands. It was an area of dilapidated concrete that we got to replace this year. Along with that, we also had a pretty long project up on the frying pan, about 13 miles, where we underwent patching, some asphalt overlay. We did a chip seal and then came back and double-chipped it to enhance rideability for cyclists up to just past the North Fork. And we also got to fix a subsidence area that's been, quite frankly, a thorn in our, in Public Works side for decades. When we got into that area, it was really interesting to go through and actually see a history of that road. As we peeled back the layers of that onion, we got to really see, you know, all the different types of repairs that have been tried over the years and all the different, you know, different mosaic really of those patches. Now, moving forward, we're looking at shifting gears. We can't sustain that level of... We can't sustain that level of capital improvement within our budget, and we're looking to shift back into a capital maintenance mode. A lot of the projects that you'll see in your 10-year plan are chip seals, overlays, patching projects, and I believe we've got one bridge project still in there. We are going to be averaging about $2 million a year, moving forward in that capital maintenance, which is a significant improvement from where we were, say, back in 2009. Some of the projects that we'll highlight for next year is, Snowmass Creek Road and Capital Creek Roads are on the docket for some capital maintenance. And it'll look similar to what the frying pan road did, with application of patching and a little bit of overlay, and extensive use of chip seal. As we're starting to design that project right now, we are looking at making that a double chip seal, like we did on frying pan road, to keep that as an asset for both our motorists and our cyclists. Another project that we have coming up for next year is the airport frontage road. In being in that neighborhood so long, so much in the last two years, what we've really noticed is, we have several drainage issues along that road, some of which we actually got to address temporarily while we were working in the area with the underpass. But really, the other thing is, we're developing some potholes through there, and it's one of our front doors for Picking County, and I don't remember what the percentage of our visitors that come through the airport is, but I believe it's somewhere in the 40% range. That's their first view of our valley, coming off of an airplane and driving through there, and so we'd like to take care of that road. We have one other project on the docket right now that we have identified, that the board has already approved, and that's the North Redstone Bridge Rail Project. That project, we were going to try to complete early this winter. Unfortunately, we had some material availability issues, and because of that, that pushed us a little too deep into winter, and we didn't want to put a contractor out there in the elements in the middle of our winter, especially up near Redstone. We do have a buy-up request in this year, and that position would be a project engineer and a project manager. The way that the write-up is proposed, it is proposing $33,000 in savings in consulting costs and more availability of our department's time. You know, it's been great since 2011 and 2012, we've gotten a lot of projects done. I think it was 2012 when John came into my office and told me, "You're going to have your head down for a while, and you're going to be managing a lot of projects." And Brian and I had a good conversation at that time of what our priorities are going to be, and there was a significant shift in my priorities as the county engineer. I went from doing a lot of things like asset management and being able to, you know, audit different programs that we have, to being a full-time project engineer. And we've gotten a lot of awesome projects done, but in shifting that focus, there's a lot of administrative tasks that isn't our front door. When we're out on the road and we're doing projects, that's the public's window into our world. But there's a lot of customer service, administrative, and asset management things that we do. One big thing is permitting. For the right-of-way permitting that we do is, any projects on a county road that's either utility connection for someone that's gone through their building permit process, utility companies coming through and putting in new gas lines, any of that, requires our time in collaboration permitting, review. And right now, the way that our program is run for permitting, unfortunately, is at a point where we're doing a permitting by committee, and it's about availability at the time. We're pretty stretched thin in that area, and instead of going out and actively participating with these permities on the projects, because inevitably, whenever you open up a road, you find something that you weren't expecting, we're going out infrequently, instead of, as a matter of course. Most of the time that we do go out there, we ask, "Hey, can we move, you know, a couple of these signs around to increase the safety of your work zone? Okay, looks like you guys found a giant boulder, you know, what's your plan of attack as far as moving the utility around? Are you going to move into the other lane? How are we going to work with this?" That sort of availability is on a reactionary basis and not on a proactive basis right now. We do have other things that are coming up, such as new sign standards. The Federal Highway Administration is mandating that local municipalities and local governments adhere to a new sign standard. Right now, what we'll do when we move forward with our asset management plan in the future is address replacement there. But unfortunately, we don't have the staff time or capacity right now to do an audit of our signs, and, you know, if we go back through and replace signs right now, we'll get to the new standard of how bright that sign is at night, but we're probably just going to be putting the same sign in that we put in in 1985. And is that really appropriate, or should we have the opportunity to go through and look at what's appropriate for that location now? And so, the last thing that I'd like to hit on with this buy-up is, my time has been requested by a lot of other departments recently. Right now, good examples, you'll be hearing from the landfill about a number of different projects, and I've been working with Kathy on the septic waste treatment facility, a very exciting project that's moving forward, but it's something that's a little bit outside of the realm of what the landfill staff usually does, and it's frankly outside of the realm that I usually do, but at least I can lend an engineering background and an understanding of some of the jargon into that project team. Open space and trails, when Gary gets grants from CEDO, one of the requirements for a CEDO permit is that they name a resident engineer. That resident engineer needs to be a licensed professional, and in the past, I've been able to be listed on some of those projects, but my involvement in that project has probably been, to a lesser extent than what we would have hoped. Projects with healthy rivers and streams, if there is a project that comes up and there's a need for contract management, there's an opportunity there. Other regional partners, we look at things that the board sees in EOTC, where we have these collaborative projects. Ruby Park is probably a great example, where staffing on our side probably hasn't been as involved as we would like to on some of these regional projects, but, you know, they affect us greatly. And so, with all those considerations, that's why we brought that buy-up forward.
Rachel?
Brian and GR, you make a good case for the buy-up, and I don't have concerns with that, but I would rather have a little more of how we get to 33K net savings over five years. You know, it's just, it should have the cost of the position, and then what you see is the cost savings of how it's going to pay for itself. But, you know, right now, it's just kind of a statement of the savings without the cost of the new position.
And Rachel, that'll be-
And how those will be realized.
I'm sorry, that will be broken down on a subsequent slide when we get into the decision point, so you'll see that there are project savings, as well as anticipated contributions from enterprise or special revenue funds, and so we do have that breakdown a little bit later in the presentation. What I would note for you, though, is, I do remember going into GR's office, and at that time, both GR and Brian had brought up the idea about capacity and the possibility of needing additional resources, and because the capital plan and our, you know, rejiggering of the funding to fund a long-term capital plan was so new, at that time, our decision was to contract out a lot of that project management and engineering and include it in the price of the projects. And so what you're actually seeing, and we'll show this to you later on, but just to give you a preview, a lot of the savings really come from taking those monies out of the project, where maybe we could afford 20 hours of project manager's time, bring it in-house, and have our own staff, but be able to fulfill a broader scope of projects and address a broader scope of questions, and it turned out to be a cost savings overall. And so that will be broken down later, and we can explain that in more detail.
Thank you.
And also, Rachel, in the budget binders, there's the second tab that has the full write-up of each of the buy-up requests, even the ones that we are not recommending. And so if there's any requests that any of the commissioners want to go into in more detail, under that second tab, and I think the engineer is page 7 in that one, there's the full write-up that the department did, with the cost analysis and everything therein in it. So you can always refer to that if we need to.
Thank you.
Steve? Two things. One project that you didn't mention, over the last two years, the dirt parts of Snowmass and Capital Creek Roads has been reworked, and Capital Creek Road, the dirt part, is in better shape than it's been in 53 years, bar none. It is, it just, you guys have worked wonders with, on the roads with the budget you have, and I think that should be noted, that the residents there have noticed that. Another possibly upcoming project, or something to be aware of, is, and I just heard it on the news this morning, that the state of Colorado is not going to be installing a certain type of guard rail because of safety considerations, and I think the county should be aware of that and look at it, and we might, you know, that might be something else for the project engineer to be looking at, guard rail projects and possibly replacing some, I don't know what type of guard rail they're talking about, but that's just one more thing, a public safety consideration.
And that's exactly the type of asset management for all of our guard rails, culverts, signs, and obviously, the lane miles of our roads that we're really looking at taking a hard look into.
And the type of guard rail you're referring to is not a problem on county roads. The state had a problem with the courts-in guard rail in the Glenwood Canyon area specifically, where they apply hundreds of thousands of gallons of magnesium chloride on that road each year, and they had some guard rail failures. We just don't have that problem in the county, but it's an example of what we'd be able to pay attention to. Along with GR, you know, he comes in with ideas all the time that get put on the back burner, because we just don't have the resource to implement them, or to examine them, or to investigate them. So with this new position, we hope to have a more creative and proactive department.
I just, I just want to take a moment and say, you know, this department was one of the big, like accelerated spending things that we did, and it was in our 2011-year budget for our 2012 budget, and we really did put a lot of pressure on you, and I'm in favor of this buy-up, because we've been so effective in doing things over the last couple of years, and I want to personally say that GR, I think your ability to manage various things and your understanding and your ability to convey things to us as a board has been instrumental in us putting that confidence in, I think, what was several million dollars increased spending in a very short period of time, and we knew that the money was going to be managed wisely, we knew that there were going to be extreme savings by doing that, by piggingbacking off of various state bids and those sorts of things. And I think you've just done a tremendous job, and your ability as a manager, the both of you, having this person to oversee projects, I'm very confident, moving forward, that this buy-up request, which, you know, even as it's represented here as a net savings, it will allow you guys to take your skills to a higher level and manage the partner to greater, to find even more savings out there. It's a perfect example of someone, you know, really learning skills to help the organization, and I compliment you guys on that over the last four years that I've been involved.
Thank you. George?
Oh, thanks. I've got a couple of comments and questions. Back to your referral, GR, where you were talking about how you were going to address the needs on Capital Creek and Snowmass Creek, in terms of the overlays and the, making that bike-friendly. I think we, as we recall, with the conversation with the Upper Frying Pan Row, we did have to compromise that section because it was not in the budget, and I think as we move forward, we should budget out all of our improvements to our roads to be bike-friendly. I think that's part of our culture here in Picking County. A question I have regarding the work over at the AABC, and I brought this up in the past, is who's going to be responsible in terms of maintaining winter maintenance? Because that has always sort of been left in no-man's land for people getting on and off rafter buses and having to get to their places of employment.
Ice on the sidewalk?
Ice, and it's, yeah, yeah, it's just never been adequately maintained, at least when I used to work out there.
Yeah, and we're going to do the best we can. We have a road and bridge department that's really geared toward rural snow removal, and we don't really, we don't have that resource available, but we're going to do our best. I think we've got an effective snow melt system in there for the pedestrian crossing now, so some of those areas will be melted out. With the connecting sidewalks, it's going to be a challenge, and, you know, we'll work with Mike. The good news is, when GR engineered the rest of the road system in the ABC, the pedestrian walkways were created where we can plow them with our normal snow removal equipment that we'd use on any road.
We have, as far as length, we probably have about an equal length of sidewalk versus at-grade walk, and that great walk was really done so that we could address some of that winter maintenance issue. The sidewalks is, as Brian said, one of those things that we're going to continue down that learning curve of interfacing our rural practices with the urban feature.
So the ramps going up and down from the underpass into the BRT stations, is that raptor's responsibility, or have, again, is that sort of no-man's land?
Ultimately, it's ours. It's our project. It's the county's asset.
Okay, well, I just think that's critical. You know, we've got a great new underpass there, we've got a great facility with the BRTs, and we need to make that as safe for the users as we're able to.
Well, since our opening of the underpass right before Christmas in 2013, we only had a few small instances where we had any issues of snow on the ramps or the sidewalks leading to and from the underpass and the bus stations themselves. Really, that next, the next area, if you will, is, once you get out to the sidewalks that are adjacent to the county roads, that's where we're still seeing some snowpack, and our top priority is still to get out and clear the, you know, the highest travel roads and those sorts of things.
The other question I bring up every year, and if it's adequately served by the budget, that's fine, but in the line item budget for road impact fees, I've seen the five-year plan, it's held consistent, and every year, I see Mike and his crew up on West Hopeless Creek fixing damages done by large trucks in terms of the construction going on there. And, you know, if those impact fees are covering those costs, covering the time that we're spending out there, that's fine, but if not, we need to look at bringing those up to cover our costs.
Yeah, two things as well. You know, I think on the sign replacement issue, we need to really stay current. I know that the National Association of Counties was really fighting against it, not on the safety, but on the, you know, unfunded mandate side, you know, when you just get a federal ruling and replace all your signs in your county, and not a dollar attached by a certain deadline, it can be really challenging, as opposed to kind of a systematic year-by-year replacement and upgrades. And so there was a similar issue about fire hydrants, and they wanted all fire hydrants replaced because of the lead content or something like that, and NACO fought back, and that was changed, and so that has not been required of communities. So let's just make sure we don't jump the gun or spend more than we have to. Again, certainly, if there's better signs out there and we're doing standard replacement or even bumping it up some, that's great, but let's make sure we know how quickly we have to act, how much we have to spend. And the other thing is, again, as we get maybe closer to the closeout, and, you know, perhaps I missed it in the book, but I'd love to compare where we are with the road projects we've completed and that original list of 10 or something that we had compiled before the mill levy vote several years back. I know frying pan road was on it, airport business center was on it, and possibly some of these others, but I'd just like to kind of get a- of these others, but I'd just like to kind of get a sense of what other, more major ones were out there looming other than maintenance, so we can keep figuring them in. And, you know, what was it, the last thing you were saying?
Road impact fees?
Yeah, I would support taking a look at that as well, and there was one other item you mentioned that just stirred something for me, but I forgot. But anyhow, I've received compliments from people at the AABC as well. They said, you know, it took a little longer than everyone would have wanted, to understand how and why, and at the end of the day, it's really turned out very nicely done. So appreciate that.
George?
Rachel reminded me, on the signage, you know, as we're, I think right now our community is rated as a bronze bike-friendly community, and we're trying to lease Aspen, and I think the county as well, we're trying to move that up ultimately to gold rating. So as we have these great quality road improvements up all of our drainage, we need to have signage along there in terms of share the roads, not only for the automobile traffic, but certainly for the cyclists, that they're aware that they're sharing the road as well.
That's a good point. We're working with GIS right now, and open space and trails to a lesser degree, to identify bike-friendly roads in the county as potential trails for people to ride on, so hopefully when we generate a map, those roads will be included on there, and we could sign those roads specifically for that. It's a good idea. Yes, we failed to introduce ourselves last time, but I'm Brian Pettit, I'm the Public Works Director, and Jonah Frank's our fleet manager, and he's doing a great job out there with the fleet department mechanics. We met with the road department yesterday, and just to do the transitional change from summer to winter, and it was the first time in my history that the road and bridge department operators complimented the mechanics. It just doesn't happen. It was amazing moment, you know, kumbaya, and everything was perfect, so. Jonah runs a great shop out there, in a very customer-oriented department. Our fleet department maintains about 190 vehicles. Currently, we are, we have six employees that are budgeted, one position is not filled. We provide services to our fire department, and to the town of Snowmass Water and Sanitation Department as well. This year was a challenging year. Again, we were able to take on a lot of sheriff's departments' needs for evidence storage. Jonah was able to solve that by buying a couple shipping containers and storing them in our own building, and now we're in the process of trying to find a home for them so we can have our space back. But along that lines, Jonah runs a great fleet, our vehicles are top-notch, they are in great condition, and it's usually repairs and preventive maintenance that are the culprits. It's not rebuilding engines and things like that. Along that line, Jonah will talk about our replacement philosophy within fleet, and the upcoming replacements that we have in 2015.
So, thanks Brian. As Brian was saying, with some of our replacement philosophies, you know, that is to help us with the unpredicted repairs and the downtime that we can't have with the departments that need our vehicles and our services. So for larger equipment, we run like a 10-year to 15-year replacement strategy with 3,000 to 7,000 mile or hour goal, and our smaller vehicles, we run a five-to-10-year replacement with a 75 to 100,000 mile goal projections. Those, you know, help us keep those vehicles on the road for our departments and our customers. Lot of our users, you know, our higher users in the five-year range that we're replacing are, you know, averaging 25,000 to 30,000 miles a year or more, you know, they're really getting used. Next year, we're proposing to replace two road and bridge heavy pieces of equipment, a tandem plow truck, and a water truck. You know, the maintenance costs and the years of service have gotten up there, and they need to be replaced. We also have five sheriff vehicles proposed for next year for replacement, two in-town pool vehicles that are due to be replaced. A community development, their truck is already seeing some age, they're, it's not that old, but they drive it a lot. And then Health and Human Services has requested additional vehicle with their expanded use.
Steve?
I noticed that, okay, the two in-town pool vehicles are averaging 40,000 each, the community development vehicle's 38,000, and the human service vehicle's 43,000. Is there that much difference between the kind of vehicles that they're using for?
There is some difference there. For community development, we need a four-wheel-drive vehicle with low-range capability, and there's not many of those vehicles out there anymore. We're trying to get a small vehicle that can go up in the woods, in the areas that they need to go and travel, so they don't get stuck, they don't have failure issues. Then the other vehicles, we're trying to get hybrid all-wheel-drive vehicles, and so the cost of those vehicles is a little bit higher.
Okay.
That answered your question, Steve, about the human services vehicle.
On a capital replacement for the two road and bridge heavy equipment vehicles, which is a big chunk of the overall budget, does that include the cost, the revenues you will have received in terms of selling the other vehicles?
It does not.
So what would you guess in terms of offsetting that, the cost of the replacement?
I would hope we could get 50,000 to 80,000 for the two units that we're going to be replacing.
So how's that work for the budget? So you replace the vehicle, and those dollars that you get, that goes into the pot to purchase new vehicles? But we don't really see that, do we, here on the budget?
You do, oh, go ahead, Connie.
There is a revenue line on the capital plan. The last revenue line on the capital plan is sale of fixed assets, which is mainly the sales of the vehicles. And so we do plan out and account for a certain percentage return on the different vehicles, and that's a revenue that goes back into the capital fund.
Okay, thanks.
Rachel?
Which are the two in-town pool vehicles that are being replaced?
Trailblazer and the Subaru.
Okay. I just have wondered whether any of them are in good enough condition, and the resale value is low enough, that maybe making sure we have more flexibility in that pool. I just know that sometimes Charlotte gets really tight for scheduling and things like that, and I really enjoy being able to use a heavy vehicle, all-wheel-drive, when I'm going to Denver in the winter over the passes, but there's other times when it feels like, boy, I just wish I had that little Subaru, because, you know, it's just, it's not a big trip, and it's not big mileage, and I'm sure you're factoring those things in, but I've just wondered whether, and I understand, we don't want anybody out there on the road in a questionable vehicle that might break down, but I just don't know if we're keeping that too tight, or maybe any of those could provide a little extra capacity.
Yeah, and I think if we look at increasing capacity, one of the things that fleet has been trying to do is manage the assets to get the most residual value, to Georgia's point about the revenues, and also minimize the impact on repairs and costs associated with that, and so my sense is, is if we want to increase that capacity, we should look at an additional purchase for pool vehicles, and we just haven't seen, we typically look at the mileage, we're close, and I agree with you, there are times I've wanted a vehicle sometimes, and they're not there. We typically are looking at the mileage usage, right, the utilization based on mileage to reach that tipping point and suggest a new vehicle, which, I don't know where we're at on those pool vehicles right now, Rachel, I suspect we're getting close, but we didn't hit it this year.
Sure, I'll leave it to you guys, I just kind of want to make that comment.
Along that line, we are close, and we're hoping that the electric vehicles that we purchase for specific departments provide some relief for that, certainly will at Public Works, and if we can shift some of the pool vehicle, or at least one, from Public Works to in-town, we'll do that. If that makes sense.
So that's taken into account, this request is taken into account if and when we ever get GR's favorite project going, the electric in-town vehicles?
Yeah.
2015?
Yes.
Yes?
Maybe, yes.
Or 16.
We do have a buy-up, which is next year, for fleet, our fuel system. We currently have three fuel sites, one at the airport, at the landfill, and at fleet, our main fuel site. We are, our current system, we don't have automated eulogy tracking, which is the head space in the tanks, and without that, we're not really meeting the state's compliance. That is, you're supposed to daily check those tanks to see what the levels are, and then have an inventory slash dispensing system to manage and track, and be able to record all that for the state. And so this buy-up is to solve that problem with automation and tank level sensors and Along with that, we are proposing to do a alternative fuel infrastructure plan that Raptor has brought to us. It's to partner, they're doing a, do a study next year on natural gas in their AOC or ABC location. They already have it in Glenwood Springs, but now they're going to be doing their planning phase next year for their facility up here.
Rachel?
This was originally part of a buy-up, that we wanted to do a complete master plan of the Public Works facility, and I think we're close in needing that, but the fuel system infrastructure need was more timely based on Raptor's request. So we scaled it back just to focus on fuel for now, but I think in the future, the board could see a complete Public Works master plan for that 25-year-old facility.
Rachel?
Yeah, two things, I support these requests, and, you know, I have noted, and again, it doesn't have to be now, because I know we have a tight schedule today, but I've noted more Raptor buses on the side of the road than in a long time, and I read something in the paper that it has to do with the natural gas, and that was an issue 10 years ago, or more, when I was on Raptor. That was part of the reason they didn't convert to natural gas, was just, they said that there was either water or impurities in the gas at these levels that would upset the electronics of the engine. And so I want to make sure we kind of have some of those things ironed out before we start converting too heavily, if this dependability and reliability is a long-term issue. So again, that doesn't have to be answered, and I hate to skip backwards, but I did have one question that's a little more for GR or Brian, but the road, the work on the airport frontage road, it's not going to be work that we have to redo or tear out when we do the terminal improvements, is it? Or will some of it, I mean, I understand you have to keep our conditions up until that point, I just want to make sure we don't go overboard if we're going to be reconfiguring those roads and things like that during the airport.
This is just more along the lines of fixing some nuisances from a maintenance standpoint, and putting a small overlay as just a capital maintenance. It's not, it's not like a full rebuild of the road, or anything along those lines.
Thank you.
Steve?
Jonah, the little mention of leak detection rang a bell with me. At one point, RE1 had an underground diesel tank leak for a long period of time, and it cost a huge amount to excavate out all the ground that that, the DSA had leaked into. And if we could somehow prevent that from ever happening to us, that would be good, but could you talk a little bit about leak detection, and just the prevention and containment and all of that?
The detection, you know, without a system like this, you can't really detect it to that level, because you don't, you know, you're manually sticking it daily, you know, to have the records and everything merge to where those numbers are perfect, and you can tell without a doubt. Those are the type of systems you need to prevent the leaks from happening. And then as far as like super fun, you know, there's funds for the fuel sites for any sort of spills and anything of that nature, if there was one, to be found.
But we're hoping with the automation that we would control that. I think that also, that will be part of the study for our fuel infrastructure plan. While we're looking at alternative fuels, we're going to look at our existing fuel systems too, to make sure that they are made and up to current standards, so we don't have a leak. Rob, you thanked us earlier, and I want to thank this board, because I talk to my counterparts in the front range, and a lot of times commissioners and councils get involved in specifying what kind of tires that we buy. We just don't have that here, and it's a huge amount of trust that's placed on us, and I just want to let you all know that we see that, and we feel it, and it just, it's so freeing to have that flexibility and creativity, and be able to solve our problems, and know that you're behind us. So thank you for giving us that latitude.
Thanks for running a great shop out there. And good roads.
Next, we do want to briefly mention some of the other items that are in our capital plan. We have capital for our bits department. We are not going into bits operations today, we will bring back more detail on that department in our November 18 budget meeting, but just to mention that we do have their capital items in this capital plan. Also, dispatch public safety has a small amount of capital included in this capital plan, and in future years, there are deferred items that we'll need to come back and address.
We do have breaks scheduled in here somewhere, it doesn't have to be right now, but I thought maybe, I had one question on that, in terms of when we do get into the bits, the information technology stuff, knowing the offset, and we talked about offset in another portion of the budget too, but I think that's a big change this year, and we've got an offsetting expense that we've been paying to the city for information technology, you know, looking at this slide, 3.3 million over a five-year total, it sounds like a lot, but there's a pretty big offset to that as well, so.
Yeah, the offset actually comes more on the operations side. Our capital has maintained fairly steady over the years, and this is just an ongoing capital plan for maintaining different pieces of the network, or software, computer printer replacements, but the offset comes in on the operations, and that's when we'll be bringing back a lot more details on the numbers and the structure of the department at the future meeting.
And before we leave that, so yes, the capital expenditures really aren't changing a whole lot right now for IT as a result of the change, that'll be in operations. The other thing to note is in radios, we have not made the conversion that a lot of communities have made to 800 megahertz to have compatibility across federal, state, and local responders, and we are in the process of conducting a study right now, looking at what kind of infrastructure improvements we may need to be making in the future to create that kind of compatibility, and also have better coverage around the county. And so that improvement, or improvements that may be identified in that study, are not included in this budget or five-year plan, and so that could be another large discussion coming back to us for future years' budgets. I just wanted to note that we probably have some infrastructure deficiencies there, we don't know the nature or scope of them yet, but we are studying that now, and that will probably be a topic for future budgets.
Rachel?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, John, and that's also been a discussion at CCI, where they're saying, I don't know this to be true, but have heard it repeated, that the 800-megahertz systems are much more difficult in mountain areas, and that it becoming this kind of one-size-fits-all federal mandate is really much more expensive, and then much less effective in our areas. And so I'd love to really dive into this topic when the opportunity comes. I think there was some efforts to push back on that standard, or ask for, again, no unfunded federal mandates, and that we somehow received some funding help with this.
And that'll, that'll be a robust discussion when it comes back around to us.
And I just wanted to clarify, as far as going back to the bits reconciliation, you're looking for?
Yeah, just looking at that budget's kind of...
City of Aspen costs versus what it's costing us to do with those services, in addition to additional... to additional monies for file management people and business process analysts.
Exactly. I mean, it's a big change from last year's budget to this year's budget, or I should say this year's budget to next year's budget. So I think it takes a little time to pull out how that, how that budget breaks out.
Right.
You know, at an earlier meeting, similarly, I had asked that we be able to see how our expenditures and projected expenditures are matching up to our original projections when we had talked about splitting the, the services. Although I realize a lot of it is not just dollars and cents, it's value-added and increased service performance for, for the county.
And control.
Yeah, but it still would be nice to see how it matched up with our original projections.
Yep.
Just a quick mention of one item that is not included in our capital plan. It was a little bit too early in the discussion to include a dollar amount for any contribution to the Glenwood Springs grid, so just so you know that that is not included.
And our thinking there is, is that there's still an ongoing discussion with EOTC funding and to see if we can use that source and at what level that would be. And that would probably define what any local contribution from the county would be next year. So we've got it on our radar screen, we just weren't quite sure where to plug it.
John, what's your suggestion for timeframe here? Go through some of...
Well, if the, we're about to talk about certificate of participation financing, so I would suggest a break before that, to be honest with you.
Before or after?
Before.
Where's our M&amp;M's, our chocolate?
They're in the back.
He's in the back.
Let's take 13 minutes, come back at, what is that, 2:35?
Based on this clock.
Welcome back. Work session, Board of County Commissioners, October 28. We're going through budget stuff on our flourishing natural and built environment. John or, John or where we are and where we're going.
So where we are now is we're starting to move into our decision points, and we'll get into a few more numbers than, than we were when we were talking about kind of the context of our budget decisions. And the first thing that we're bringing back to you is a discussion of potential project funding methods for the proposed facility improvements to the Courthouse Plaza for remodel and addition. And this is in response to a specific question that Rachel had asked about the differences or potential differences in funding methods between certificates of participation, revenue bonds, or general obligation bonds. And with that, I will turn it over to Tom to lead off this discussion.
Good afternoon. Tom Oken, County Treasurer. Yeah, as John was explaining, Rachel had asked, you know, how much cheaper would it be if we issued, say, general obligation bonds instead of lease purchase certificates of participation? And basically, the market views the lease purchase certificates of participation, COPs, as riskier than a general obligation bond of ours that's backed by our property taxing power. So essentially, all the property in the county backs up that debt issue. So that's really our cheapest financing option. And the spread in interest rates, how much cheaper it is, is about four tenths of a percent cheaper. So as you can see, for the COPs, we were estimating a, an interest rate of 4.2%. The GO bonds would be 3.8%. And actually, that's probably the cheapest in terms of the spread between the two. It might be a little bit less, half of a tenth of a percent. So there, there is another alternative kind of in between, and that's what's called a sales tax revenue bond, in which we issue debt, but it's backed by our sales tax revenue stream. We only pledge that revenue stream to it. That scene is fairly secure for this, too, and you'll see it's only a tenth of a percent more expensive than general obligation bonds. And the reason for that is that our annual general fund sales tax is eight million? Eight million dollars. And so if you're guaranteeing a debt payment stream of 875,000 here against, and you have eight million in revenue to pledge against it, that's viewed as very secure as well. So kind of the, the bottom line there is I just took it down to the present value of the savings in debt over the 20 years. And so this is for $12 million to be amortized over a 20-year term. And so over that period of time, sales tax revenue bonds are about $330,000 cheaper in present value right now if we were to issue it. And general obligation bonds are 100,000 cheaper than that. 434,000 would be the present value savings there. So obviously, this is not a decision that you have to make right now. The capital plan shows in 2016, $12 million of financing from COPs, because you can issue those and are into that lease purchase agreement without voter approval. So you can do that, no matter what. But you might want to consider for the savings to go to the voters next November and ask for sales tax revenue bond authorization. There, all you're asking for is the authorization to issue debt, not a tax increase, because you already have the revenue to pay back the debt. And so that's a possibility to have some savings. Probably would never go for general obligation bonds as a question, because there you're asking for not just the debt, but also a property tax increase of whatever's needed to repay that debt. And so you have to get authorization for both, a tax increase, which is a lot harder, and a debt authorization. So those are your alternatives, and come next summer, as you're more into the planning stage, this is to finance the public safety addition to the Courthouse Plaza. So as that develops, we'll be having this alternatives discussion probably in the summer, since if you wanted to put a question on, you have to do that by the end of August, pretty much.
Rachel.
Are there issuance cost differences between the bonds and the COP?
Yeah, the COP's slightly more expensive, just because there's more paperwork.
I was just wondering if maybe there were savings at that, on that end of the, as opposed to just the interest rates.
Yeah, it's not nearly as great. It's maybe five, $10,000.
Huge.
So we're, why are we using 12 million as, as a number if we're looking at possible cost of the project, 20 million plus?
So in particular, so there's a couple of reasons that we were looking at COP financing. One, it provides you the most flexibility on timing. And one of the things that we'll want to be careful of and will play into our decision is there's only one time a year that you can go out for the other two debt mechanisms. And one of the things we're trying to avoid is construction inflation, which one years of construction inflation dwarfs the savings from the other two methods if you've got to wait for a year. And so that's, that's one reason that we're looking at keeping that, that tool on the table. The, the other reason, obviously, is it, is the most costly method, so we wanted to budget to, to that, assuming that you can issue all at the same time. So the reason that we landed on the 12 million was kind of gearing towards the certificates of participation, George, and the improvement that you're issuing a lease purchase against, you really have to have the, the value of that improvement matches closely to that overall debt issuance as possible, and that, that really is a risk mitigation tool for the, the issuers to ensure that you're fully invested or there's no partial ownership questions around the improvement. We couldn't do that with the remodel, per se, because that is, you know, roughly four to five million dollars of the project on the existing Courthouse Plaza building. So that's really, as we get closer to the project, get through design, get through budgeting, we will be able to bring back a more detailed package. These are estimates with absolutely no design at this point. And so as we get through design and we get through budget, we would be modifying these numbers, but we think that this is a, a good placeholder that provides the board a lot of flexibility going forward.
Steve.
Two questions, John. What would be the cost to hold a special election if we did an election in November 2015?
Does anyone remember what our last...
It might be 495,000 or something, who knows? Maybe it's less, I don't know.
It would be during, it'd have to be during a general, already in November, election. And so we'd share proportionally in the costs with whatever other entities have questions. My, does anyone remember what we paid on the Healthy Community Fund? You know, Steve, that's a good question. I don't think it would be, you know, would cover these full costs. Really, what this hedges, what the COPs allow you to hedge against, because you have flexibility in issuing, the biggest issue is construction inflation. And we don't want to be in a situation where the board has to rush a decision on design of the facility, because we're already going to be pretty crunched on that going into the summer months, I think, to do a thorough job there, or to put off construction another year, particularly when we're in a period where, you know, it's not unreasonable to think we might be experiencing anywhere from 5% to 10% inflation rates on construction, which right away, you're better off doing the COPs and building a year earlier, if that, that makes sense, because then you're into $1 to $2 million of additional costs versus the 300 in net present value. But Tom's point is right, that if we're through design, you have something that you're comfortable with before that August timeframe, when we need to begin notifying the clerk's office and certifying ballot language. If we find ourselves in that position, and we also find that there aren't other competing ballot questions that the board would take into consideration, it could make a lot of sense financially for us to go out. And the good news is, we think this budget would only benefit from that decision. But again, it'll cost us more if we rush design or what have you, and there would be an offset. I mean, it's, there's definitely a cost to participating in those elections that would come off of this, and I just don't know what that would be off the top of my head.
20,000 range, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
If we decided to go to the voters for the bond issue and then it failed, how long would it take to do the COP at that point? Is there, would be, we have the legal ability to go and do that immediately after an election? Or is there some rules we don't know about?
No, you can go right ahead.
We could proceed immediately then.
Yeah, to prepare that.
Okay.
Thanks for the information. As everyone says, it's a decision for a later day.
This next chart is a 25-year look at fund balances for the general fund, both looking back to 2000 and then looking forward to 2024. It's just to give a little perspective in the ups and downs and with our, the largest capital project that we've taken on in decades, what kind of effect does that have? And compare it with where we've been historically and where we think we'll be 10 years from now. So you can see that 2000, 2001, that was our low point. We were down closer to 4 million in our total fund balances for the general fund. Over the next 12 years, there was gradual increase in accumulation in our fund balances up to our high point in 2011 and '12. At that point, we started to invest in some major road infrastructure projects, and we spent down part of our fund balance. The facilities projects that are proposed in our capital plan would bring that fund balance down even more, down to a low point of 10.5 million in 2016, after the projects are complete. But then it increases up again to about 15 million at 2024. So this just kind of gives you an idea of what it looks like with saving up and then spending down, saving up and spending down, and compare it to where we were in the past.
And this is just as much for the public's benefit to, to understand. I, I think there sometimes is a perception out there that as we've come out of the reception, the recession, I'm sorry, that we've used fund balance to get through that and are somehow at a low point, when in fact, if you look at historically, we've accumulated fund balances that we've now been putting towards capital improvements. We started with roads, and our proposal now is to, to move on and address facility needs.
One, one thing in looking at this chart last night, that I think would be useful, because it's really only one piece of, I think, a two-piece puzzle, which is revenue and expenditures. You know, fund balance only tells one part of the story. I mean, a $20 million fund balance is healthy if we're spending 10 million a year. It's not healthy if we're spending 100 million a year. So the, the other side of the story is what our expenditures are out of the general fund every year and what our revenues are. Obviously, the difference between those two is whether or not the fund balance increases in any given year or decreases in any given year. But just saying that, you know, a $15 million fund balance is healthy, it really depends on what our budgetary expenditures are of whether or not that is healthy. And I know some of these fund balances are, some of these different colors on this chart are directly related to that because of state statutes and having to have a reserve of a certain amount of our spending. So I, that would be an interesting piece to include in here, is that expenditure line and the revenue line. And then you could see the difference, and that's how much we go up in a year or how much we go down. When expenses are greater than revenue, that this line, this bar goes down. When expenses are less than revenues, this bar goes up. I think it would give a fuller picture, at least. Kind of felt like that was missing a little bit. And I know we've looked at this as well, and we look expenditures and a revenue separately, but putting them together, I think, for me, would be helpful.
Well, in prior years, we've shown the kind of flat $4 million.
Yeah.
Because basically from the green area down. And this shows an adjustment with a, I think, a 16% reserve. So you can see in the, the out years, that's adjusted on the expenditure side as a percentage. But in terms of a net-net, we can show you something different, too.
Thank you.
Steve.
I noticed that on the restricted funds, there's, there was a terrific drop in it, and that's the yellow, the yellow block. In the year 2013, what, what was the difference between 2012 and 2013?
I believe that is where some park mitigation funds were spent.
So we had $700,000 that we appropriated but have not expended actually yet for park dedication fees. And that was on the potential tie bar trail alignment that we're still working on. working on.
The next chart is the same information, but just looking more closely at 2014 through 2024, to show our projections of what we think the impact of, as Rob was saying, our expenditures and our revenues, what we're projecting, what we're budgeting, what will the, how will that impact our fund balances. And so, we start 2014. We think that at the end of 2014, we will have 16.8 million total in fund balance in the general fund, 11 million of that being unrestricted fund balance in the blue section. It drops down as we're beginning to spend more with our capital plan, and then drops down, of course, even further with the use of 5.5 million in unrestricted fund balance being moved into capital, and then spent on our facilities modernization. And so, our low point is in 2016 with 10.5 million. But then, we do predict that in the years to come, we will not be spending more than we're taking in. We will have excess revenue over our expenditures, and again, we'll begin to build those fund balances back up, and then probably, at some point in the future, address other larger capital projects, too. Any questions on the fund balances?
Just note for the board, everything above that green bar by GFOA standards is considered healthy. So, we're, and Rob, that kind of gets to your point, I think, of what you were looking for, because we've adjusted that by the 16.7% now by GFOA of fund balance to appropriations. And so, we've accounted for that. So, it kind of answers your question. Our, our healthy levels are what we consider are discretionary levels for operations and capital, are in that blue and red, and that puts, those are all, indicate good health in fund balance.
And I think you said 11 million at the end of 2004 discretionary, but capital is really discretionary as well, isn't it?
That's correct.
So, it's 12 million is discretionary.
You're correct.
We just color them so they're easy to keep track of.
Now, we come to our first decision point, which is our general fund capital plan. We've talked in some detail today about different parts of this capital plan, our roads, our vehicle acquisitions, and the different facilities projects that we have included here. For revenues to support these projects, we have 52% of our sales tax. And in addition to that, there are some other minor revenues, the road impact fees, the sale of vehicles that are coming in. We are also anticipating to transfer 5.5 million from our unrestricted general fund balance into the capital fund balance. And then, as Tom mentioned, the 12 million in COPs is included in this plan, along with the corresponding payments, the lease purchase payments. And so, at this point, we'd like to know if the board conceptually agrees with this plan, and would like us to move forward in this direction.
Let's say, board, Stephen and Rachel.
The whole budget, I mean, some people see the budget as a bunch of numbers, and I see it in a presentation like today, that the budget represents service we're providing to the community. It's the roads, it's the community development, it's all the different departments that are all providing services to the citizens of the county. And our construction plan that we have, even though it's expensive, it's providing essential stuff that we, I see that we really need to do it, to provide the level of service and safety for the court system, and all of those different things are really important. And we can manage it with the income we have, and you guys work wonders doing, you know, moving the different funds around. And I've noticed that, you know, we're do, we'd be spending a lot more on the construction of the new facilities, but other places that we have been spending money on, the capital expenditure is going way down, so that compensates for a lot of that. And you've just done, I think, a good job of, you know, figuring out, how can we pay for the new facilities with, by, you know, moving the money around to, like, really focusing it where, where we need to. So, you know, I feel comfortable with the budget so far, like you've presented it.
Rachel?
Yeah. I think the big issue or question behind this is going forward with creating a debt, whether it's through bonds or the COPs, that will give us some pretty tight, you know, ending balances here. I mean, we all have to really be aware of that, because that is a kind of rollover number. And should we have something come up that we need to make repairs or something, then the next years will be decreased by that. Now, I realize this is separate from our contingency funds, which we maintain for more catastrophic type of events. But to me, that's just the issue we all need to be fully aware of. And I, in the years on the board, through no, not a fault matter, but it, throughout the year, you generally end up with a few memos of interest, requests that, you know, the plumbing has failed in this building, can you fix it, or they really need to enlarge this doorway for ADA, or something. You know, just things that aren't normally captured fully in the course of a budget hearing. And so, I think that we should make it a little bit of a policy going forward, if those are general fund requests that we're seeing mid-year, that we show the impact on the five-year plan, or at least going out a little bit further. But I think there will be times when we're going to get pretty close, especially with, you look at 2021, with a projected $373,000 margin. And if any spending decisions are made in years prior to that, that's, that's going to be a lower number. Now, of course, I know we budget conservatively for sales tax and other growth and things like that, so, you know, it could be a brighter picture. But, you know, for me, I was just kind of looking at, well, the senior center, hmm, they're not getting any capital improvements until 2021. Is that really going to pan through, or are we going to find some flooring needs to be replaced, or something to keep it up to the standards? So, for, for the snapshot in time that it is today, this is a very thoughtful budget. It enables us to do long overdue needed improvements to facilities. But it is, it is going to be tight in those out-years, and I think any unanticipated capital requests are going to have to really demonstrate their impact on the long-range plan in the future.
George?
So, just to clarify one of Rachel's points, under facilities, you have a line item for contingency project management, which went up substantially over the last year. So, that not only includes contingency for the new facilities, but also address any possible maintenance that we may see in the other facilities?
It's simply a formula. It's taking 15% of the facilities expenditures that are budgeted for that particular year. And so, that's why you see, especially in 2016, that there's 2.4, 2.5 million in contingency, just because the expenditure amount is so large. We anticipate that we won't spend all of that, but it, it's there as a backup.
And George, we-
So, again, back to Rachel's point. So, for, if I look at 2015, at 341,000 into contingency and project management, that, those dollars also include contingency for needs of any Health and Human Services building, or senior center, or no?
Well, the funding is available, if we don't need it, on another project. And from time to time, we'd come back and, and say, we want to shift and do these other projects. So, right now, that 15% would be available. Frankly, we haven't done a building project this big since we built the old courthouse 130 years ago, right? And my, my sense is, just as, you know, when GR tears up a road and finds something he doesn't expect, particularly in the constrained kind of site that we're going to be working in with this proposed addition, we're going to dig in and find something that we don't expect. And so, George, yes, those funds would be available. I would fully expect that 15% is probably going to be applied to the, the project that, that we're on. What I would point out, though, for, for both you and Rachel, because we were concerned about how tight this would make us, too. And so, if you look at the operating side, you know, in 2015, we've got a deficit, but on average, we're spinning off another $500,000 before we get into a deficit position. And that would typically more than address any maintenance, unforeseen maintenance issues or such that, that we experience, unless it's catastrophic in a facility. So, you don't necessarily have to eat into fund balance right away to address those kinds of unknown issues. And that was part of our strategy in building this budget, was to make sure we had some room because of the, the size and nature of the projects that we're proposing, are bigger than we're used to dealing with.
Yeah. And just to follow up on that, of the 2016-year contingency numbers, to the extent they're associated with the COPs for the project, for the actual building, I don't believe you'd be able to shift them into other projects, because they're related to that amount. Now, I'm not sure. Maybe they are available, almost like getting cash back on a refinancing. We're saying it's worth 12 million, you give us 12 million, we don't spend 12 million, can we use it on other things? I don't know that part, you know, but it is related primarily to the building, not, you know, for other, other purposes.
Okay. So, I'll just weigh in. As, as you've started this conversation a few weeks ago, John, the thrust of the increase in this budget really is tied to the capital plan in terms of new buildings. And so, I support the budget in terms of being able to move forward in terms of the planning and design of those buildings. And then, when we get to those decision points, then we'll have further conversations in terms of the extent of the energy efficiency of those buildings, the, the options in terms of how we're going to fund those buildings. But for me, this provides a path to allow staff to go forward and continue the work. So, with that, I would support this.
Yeah. I'll, I'll follow up with that. You know, I want to add that moving forward with this budget plan to have a design phase, more research done, getting into 2015, assessing the project from an energy efficiency standpoint, and what add-ons are going to be part of that, the funding process at that time. And I would add the economic place at that time, because I wish I could predict where we're going to be tomorrow from an economic standpoint versus where we are today. Every day, it changes, and through our financial advisory board, we get the most, you know, we get a lot of good advice on how out-years are going to measure up. But every time time passes, those out-years get changed in various things. The two things that I think are most crucial in moving forward at this point, as we'll see with a lot of our long-term planning in this, in this cycle, is that our financial advisory board and most indicators out there show that inflationary costs are going to increase. And that affects us in two different ways. The rate of which we can borrow from on something like, on something like these certificates of participation, and the cost of construction. And having those double whammies of both of those go up at a high, at a high percentage in the out-years, the sooner we do some of that. I would like to note also that if you look at these two last, the slot, this slide and the slide right before, this decision-making point, and that's good to stay on this one, this decision-making point that we're looking at right now is the red. It's not the blue, green, yellow, or green, it's just the red. And that, and that, what's listed in this chart is operations, which I think is a little deceiving. I like how it's listed a little bit better in our proposed general fund capital plan, which is a transfer from general fund restricted fund balance. That's not really the cost of operations, that blue line. That's the fund dedicated towards operations, and the balance in that fund. Operations actually cost a lot more than that, but that's a percentage of the total expenditures that go towards operations, things like staff, labor, those sorts of things. So, that's also part of our safety net, that blue. It's, it's fund balance. It's money that's in the bank, money, money that's in the bank that's earning, you know, 1% basically at this point. We do see that increasing a little bit down the road, but right now, I think it's a little bit above 1% as a total. You know, if you averaged in all the, all the places, we have that money invested. So, what we're really looking at at this decision-making point is the effects of that red line. And as you can see, we do a big transfer to it in the first year to kind of get this project rolling, to have money available for the design thing before the certificates of participation. And then, that red line actually starts to grow down the road. So does the blue line. So, like I said, I, I think I'm in the same position as George, and, and what Rachel stated, that, you know, obviously, after the design phase, and as that moves along, we need to take closer looks at, look, a closer look at it. But this is a good plan moving forward, and it was a lot of good work by our staff.
Our next decision point is on the general fund buy-up request that relate to the flourishing natural and built environment. Slide 40 shows costs for 2015 and projected out through 2019. We have our public works engineering, engineer and manager, and the numbers in parentheses are negative numbers, which mean they are either savings or additional revenues. That position has a net cost of about $11,000 in 2015. But then, in the out-years, we estimate that there will actually be savings from that position, as you see with the negative numbers. In facilities maintenance, this is the cost of the increase in hours per week from three days a week to five days a week for the admin assistant, plus the addition of health insurance benefits. Then, we have our two different buy-ups for fleet, with the alternative infrastructure plan in 2015, and tentatively having the whole public works master plan in 2017. That's a placeholder. And then, the update of the fleet fuel system, as Jonah was talking about, the tanks and all that is necessary there. The total cost of these buy-ups for 2015 is about $300,000, and then, over the course of the five years, $470,000.
I'm supportive of the buy-up request.
Yeah, so am I. I think staff gave a, a solid rationale and argument for these requests.
Yeah. I'm, I'm in support of them. And I would just reiterate what I said earlier. I think these buy-up requests really reflect a trust in the staff, that they are moving forward with very cost-efficient ways of managing our budgets.
And then, we also have a pending buy-up request, which is, I guess, not really a decision point at this moment, but just know that this is a supplemental that could be coming back to you in the spring of 2015. And now, we're moving on to another success factor in our strategic plan, conserve natural resources and environment, and we will bring Open Space up.
Yeah, John, you keeping an eye on time.
Yeah, we're at about 3:15. We have 45 minutes, so-
We'll be really fast.
As you can go.
You can do that.
All right. Well, Open Space and Trails has had a very successful 214. We're looking forward to our 25th anniversary year next year. And really, our proposed budget doesn't have a lot of excitement in it. We want to start out, though, by kind of reviewing what we accomplished this year. And on the acquisition program, we had the historic acquisition of Glacier Ranch in partnership with Eagle County happen right after the new year. partnership with Eagle County happen right after the new year. We are already in full swing on the planning for that open space property, and we look forward to the adoption of that plan yet this year. In addition, we acquired the Moore River parcel. That was outgrowth of our Roaring Fort Gorge management plan that identified this key in-holding, and we're happy that we were able to reach an agreement with the Moore family for the purchase of that property, so that we've now kind of consolidated that four-mile canyon between Stein Park and Jaffe Park. And lastly, we have an acquisition pending, the Wheatley Open Space, which we're coming back to you in November with a tweak on the plat, but we'll close that this year if everything goes according to plan. For a hat-trick on the acquisition program, we're slipping in a final one, although that's coming back to you on second reading next week up on Coal Creek. We also had a big year implementing plans on properties that had been in the portfolio for some time, and I'll let Gary work through the details on these.
Sure. I mean, it was a great year for trails and parks. Obviously, the one in the middle is a great one. We've been getting great feedback on Elk Park. We were able to finish that first phase this fall. It's looking really good. Hopefully, we can get a contractor willing to do the other phase for the depot in 2015, so we can get that fully complete. A couple of the big trail projects, one of the biggest one was the implementation of that Phase 1 of the Roaring Fort Gorge, which was the Rio Grande Trail. And in that picture, you can see how we separated, you know, the soft surface off to your left with the hard surface to your right. So far, we've gotten great feedback from the use separation on that. The aquascults are loving the fact they don't have the bicycles, and the bicycles are loving the fact they have a straight shot through with an asphalt surface, so that was very successful. And then we had a couple of Sky Mountain Park projects. Both of them had some private funding that helped complete them both. The deadline has been a huge success. Our use numbers were much higher than we expected when we started looking at the trail counters. It's been an incredibly fun project to do with the town of Snowmass Village and the city of Aspen on that. And then that directly bumped into the ditch line project, which is a great little connection from Sky Mountain Park to the Brush Creek Trail. And amazingly, that one is going to be completely paid for by a private individual. And so all the successes that we've been doing on these trails have been leading to private funding that are helping further all of our goals and our management plans that we create.
Okay.
And we're also doing some incredible planning and habitat conservation. We get lucky, and we get four quarterly meetings with you guys, so you guys get updated pretty regularly on this. But Smuggler Mountain has started, and we are doing about nine acres of lodgepole habitat work, where we're going to basically clear out areas that were hit hard by the beetle and also areas that, you know, we identify pretty close to Aspen stands and other areas of disturbance, so we can create a larger disturbance in there. And we are monitoring with Colorado State University to see what comes up through the use of mechanical. And that's part of that Hunter Creek Cooperative Plan that we work with the Forest Service. This is the first time we're doing a habitat improvement project on Forest Service lands, and.
With funding from ACES.
With funding completely from ACES. ACES is doing the funding, but it's a great partnership, because the Forest Service needs a government agency to run the project, so Picken County is running the project with the city of Aspen, and ACES is going to pay for that project, and we'll get you more results as we see them next year. Sky Mountain Park is now complete. We did about, after, we said it was going to be about 105 acres, but in the end, we got about 77 acres complete due to steep slopes and, you know, looking at, you know, when you get in there and you're looking at it, when you start clearing out some areas, some areas looked really nice, and we kept those mature areas that really didn't need the habitat improvement. So we've got monitoring before, we're doing monitoring this fall right after, we're going to be doing monitoring next year, and then we'll monitor again in four years and 10 years to see how this project is moving. The great thing is, is I've been up there a lot looking at the project, and the deer at least have extremely been very happy with this new project, because there's all this new stuff for them to eat underneath, because the machines didn't get all the way to the bottom. So that's been a really successful project. And then Dale mentioned the glacier planning process, we're working through that right now. Hopefully, we will have that complete by the end of the year, and we'll be able to implement next year. It's a great project that has a lot of our open space values of wildlife, recreation, and agriculture and scenic. And then the other big one that we're working on right now is an update to the North Star Management Plan. There's some, potentially some really great projects that are going to come out of that, and, you know, we're going to start working on that, hopefully, in this winter, we'll be coming back, and people will be seeing the results of all the planning process on North Star.
Okay. So we're continuing to collaborate with our sister departments. GR mentioned in his presentation the improvements at the ABC, and we use that as an opportunity to rebuild both the existing stairwell trail down to the river, but also to throw in one that's ridable. So that's been good as a part of the drainage improvements there. We also acquired a conservation easement that's been long sought after in Snowmass Creek that came through approval of a development agreement. And so now this reach of the Clear W property is conserved. I think that's roughly 500 acres then through there, and it's contiguous with the Harvey Conservation Easement. So we were quite pleased to see that one come through with no expenditure from the fund.
Rob?
Yeah, Rachel.
You know, I just wanted to make a comment here. I was coming through McLean Flats Road and looking at that angle over at the Stein Park, or, excuse me, the Shine Trail rebuild, and some of that was the work that we did separately with Public Works for the storm and drainage. And I just would like to make sure that we coordinate between the two departments to double-check the re-veg next spring, and if it needs reseeding or more vegetation work. You know, obviously, you can't get grasses started this time of year and things like that, but it did look still a little barren and looking like a construction site, and so I just want to make sure we give it the attention it needs in the springtime to get it off on the right foot.
Definitely. We're, you know, we're watching it. We reseeded it this fall, and it's starting to come back, but from afar, and McLean Flats and I drive that regularly, too, we're not there yet, but we will.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Well, sure.
All right, take it away, Gary.
Well, 2015, we got some, you know, pretty, you know, notable projects that we have coming up. One of them is to start looking at the Castle Creek Trail again. You know, working with the music school, you know, they've been looking at this, their campus has been getting renewed. The problem is still there with access to the music school. So we are going to work with the city of Aspen and Works to relook at that area, open up the planning again of what we did back in 2007, and to see what would be available to do in the future. It might take a little bit of funding from both the city and the county to, you know, update some of the engineering on it, but we just don't know until we start looking at it. We have some funds available in our overall trail project fund to handle that, but if it becomes a bigger project, you'll see us coming back. But I just want to let you guys know that this is on the radar, and it's going to be, it's something that needs to happen. The school is definitely, you know, redeveloping, too, and we're just, we're at a point where we can move forward with trying to plan that appropriately and trying to get pedestrians from the school and the bicycles from the school to be more safe along Castle Creek Road.
When we get to our long-range plan, some of the capacity that we've been saving is definitely intended to implement this Castle Creek Trail plan once we've got this design reestablished.
And then the Elk Park, obviously, we talked about earlier. Hopefully, we'll get that under contract this winter and ready to go in the spring. The Hummingbird Trail was a project from this year that we didn't quite get to. We're going to start that up in the spring. It took a while to get through the Forest Service final approval process of that, and, you know, and it's just basically weather at this time of year, so we're going to get that going. That's a great collaboration with the city on that one. And then.
The North, ready? North Star Plan, we met last week with the Healthy Rivers Board. They've got funding in their budget as well as we do for implementation of plans, so that's exciting. Could be the first big partnership on a restoration effort with the river board. And in the meantime, we've got to revise the plan. It was, the plan we have now is adopted in 2000. It's been a little long in the tooth that that one's been there, and we're working with Aspen Valley Land Trust and our other stakeholders to seek input on the revision of that plan and hope to have that adopted early in 2015.
And as we talked about the glacier, what comes out of the plan will be some implementation steps, especially with the agricultural piece. And, you know, any further budget implementation of that will come through potential supplemental if necessary. We'll see what comes into the final plan. And then we're going to continue the implementation of the Smuggler and the Sky Mountain Park plans. Basically, in Smuggler Mountain, we're going to work with ACES again on some habitat improvement projects up on Smuggler Mountain and on the Forest Service and Hunter Creek. Basically, we're going to be focusing on mountain shrub treatments, and we are potentially looking at future potential of a prescribed burn up in the Hunter Creek area. We've been working very hard to, you know, document what mechanical can do, but, you know, fire has always been proven to do the best restoration for it, and we'll see if that could be implemented. We're also working with the Nishir Conservancy and obviously the Forest Service on that. A lot more to come, we're not even close. But just wanted to give you a heads up that we're starting to start thinking about more natural process up there, which will be a really cool thing to see. And then on Sky Mountain Park, you know, we have some ponds that were created by the former owner, and those irrigation ponds are no longer needed, so let's return that back to habitat, let's restore that meadow. We're going to get the plans going for that next year, and if we can do it in-house, we can. If we need to do a larger project, we will potentially come back, but we're going to plan it next year and get that one moving. And also, all the monitoring we do on Sky Mountain Park, not only for the habitat improvement projects we did, but the original monitoring we did when we purchased the property, we're going to remonitoring that stuff.
On this.
Rachel, and then George.
I was just going to say, on that restoration of ponds into habitat, make sure you're checking with John Ely on any of the water rights to see if they were not augmentation ponds that are necessary to be able to pull water for the irrigation we are doing, so.
George.
Yeah, I think one of the bigger challenges will be how you go about with the planning for the Castle Creek Trail project, because Open Space has been through this dance before, and it was pretty ugly. But it also has the opportunity to revitalize the Castle Creek Caucus, since now we've just approved a Maroon Creek Caucus, leaving the Castle Creek Caucus ability to focus specifically on their valley.
We learned something in that last round. On this resurfacing, let me just introduce this one by saying that you'll note in our long-range plan, there's a big blip in 2015 on what we're spending on maintenance. Our overall cap in our charter on maintenance is definitely a challenge to us. We're going to take this funding for this project, it's overdue. We will be needing to revisit the caps on our maintenance allocation in our fund in the next election, and we're not here to talk about that today, but we will be coming, we'll be becoming conscious of that as we move into 2016 and have more of these larger maintenance items coming up.
And one of the things we're doing with this resurfacing is that we're going to partner with Public Works on the bidding of this, and so hopefully, we will be, you know, seeing an economy of scale by putting all our projects together into one bid. So that is one of the big collaborations that we need to do. And as we prepare for what you said, is to look at our future needs, is we need to work with Public Works and see when they're hitting big times for resurfacing and everything else. So we can always be trying to make the project as large as possible to get some economies of scale.
And of course, the continuation of our acquisition program, which we don't budget ahead of time, because we don't want to telegraph our expectations to anyone we're negotiating with, but that's an ongoing part of the program that does appropriations on a rolling basis, as you're well aware, and does account for the lion's share of the open space allocations. So in our long-range plan, really, this is just a continuation of our existing staff complement and programs and capital plans that we've adopted. We've got nine FTEs, hard at work on all these things. Now would be a good place for me to mention, we are looking forward to this new facility. As we go through these years, we're spread between two floors, and we could pick up some greater efficiency as well. We've got people out at Public Works as well. You see this, in the maintenance side of this thing, pretty big expenditure for 2015. We're having to taper that back down as we head out towards the 2020, which is when the fund is currently projected to sunset. Somewhere between now and then, we will be talking to you about a referendum to reauthorize this fund. But really, the, you know, the lion's share of the work we do, both on our big capital trail projects as well as our acquisition projects, we appropriate on an ongoing basis rather than annually, so you're seeing large capacity that's reserved in this long-range plan.
Let me make a couple of quick comments here. You know, I think I've been talking about this for at least the last three years, if not the last full four years that I've been here, is this challenge with the maintenance and trails versus the acquisition and the balance of this funding. So, I mean, we obviously have to continue, as you've already expressed, on looking at solutions for that and figuring out where we go. And I recognize in what you had said about acquisition program and that we really can't budget that and forecast it, and it has to be on an ongoing, rolling basis. But I spent a lot of time looking at this, the way this budget is presented to us, and it's, there's some areas that I think could be expressed a little clearer, primarily in the project areas that aren't within the acquisitions that we know. I mean, we've gone through a lot of that project list with you that's been expressed, whether it be, you know, finishing up some Rio Grande Trail, stuff that are in various areas up at Redstone. And a lot of those expenditures, we know for at least 2015, if not, we've got some expenditures here in 2016 as well. It would be nice to kind of see it like our roads budget with those projects outlined and what the individual expenditures are for the various projects. Also, how administration works into it. It was really, and it still is a little confusing, maybe you can speak to it a little bit, how that annual revenue from administration comes in. On the other ones, you've got maintenance 5% to 15%, you've got trails, acquisition and construction, 10% to 30%, and then you've got the 65% to 85% for property acquisitions. You know, it would be nice to kind of see the full revenue of the fund balance in there, and then how that gets, how the projection is to divide it up in various years moving forward. You've got that here, but it's not, it's not clear as to what's what. Does that make sense, the two requests that I'm asking there? One, the projects that we know where we're kind of queuing up in various years down the road. You know, we might put a little place setter, like we do for roads and bridges, for the Castle Creek Trail planning, that might be a 2017 number, and it would be easier to kind of look at how this flows over a five-year plan. And I totally get the acquisition thing, you know. The acquisition is just a number that's going to roll into the next year and into the next year until those opportunities come up.
Right. And on the administrative side, you know, we've been working with Tom, the way this fund is managed, but that is coming off the top before these allocations are made, so.
And that's coming off to kind of create a net. And that's coming off to kind of create a net zero balance in that area, is the way I read this.
Well, in other words, we're distributing it across the funds in accordance with these allocations in the charter.
Rob, there is detail on their out-year capital plans in the capital replacement section of your budget book. There's a tab for the capital replacement schedules, and I think it's page 24 through You do have it detailed. We didn't pull it into the presentation, and we can do a better job of that next time around.
Yeah, I mean, and I see that, you know, flipping back to that page. But again, you've got that less projects for, say, maintenance, 1.1 million. Okay, well, what are those projects? And, you know, having a little bit of a breakdown in this part of the presentation, I think, would be helpful. George?
Yeah, regarding the maintenance, it would be good to break that out because, of course, that looks like a high number, but part of that maintenance is maintaining a premier Nordic system in the country that Open Space does. There's nothing that's comparable to that that we have here in Picken County with over 90 kilometers of machine set track that is free to the public. And that's a big chunk of this maintenance.
Yeah.
So it would help to break that out as you think about reauthorization so the public knows and just raises awareness that some of your dollars go towards our Nordic system.
And it's, I mean, that's the thing, is it's in that detail. I think we need to do a better job in this presentation because it's on TV and everything else that we need to break that out. Because we have all that broken out, obviously, you know, because you looked at it. It is a pretty good chunk, especially when we have to do replacement of snow cats and stuff like that. So that's a big deal.
And that could be on a, just like our fleet management, that could be on a cycle. So you could see that Snow Cat lasts this long, and this is the year that it's going to be scheduled for replacement or.
Well, yeah, and we do have that.
Yeah.
Just we need to, you know, it's, we didn't put it in this presentation, and, you know, we can make it clear so you can look at one piece when you're looking through the entire budget.
Thank you. Additional questions on the Open Space and Trails budget?
Are you guys good with the buy-up?
We have a buy-up, which is a habitat improvement project down at Falla.
We've been trying to, we've been trying to burn Falla Meadows and above Falla Meadows for a long time now with the Forest Service. And we're at a point with the Forest Service that, like Colorado Parks and Wildlife up in Basalt Mountain, if we want to get this done, we need to fund it. And even though this is not fully 100% on Falla Meadows, it starts on Falla Meadows. And we are a big partner with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the Forest Service on this. We've done some habitat improvement work in the Pinion Juniper. And now, you know, burning up those hillsides would be a huge benefit to the bighorn sheep and the elk that are pretty reliant on this area. So, you know, I'm pretty positive if we can get this funding and we, and if we get a good burn window next spring, we could potentially, or fall, we can make this happen.
So we have two decision-making points. One is approval of the multi-year plan that's been put in front of us, and the second is the buy-up request.
Good with me.
I support it.
Great. Thanks.
Good.
So just in the interest of, sorry, in the interest of timekeeping, we've got about 20 more minutes, and we have three more areas to talk about. My suggestion for the board is we do have time on November 25th. It would be easy for us to do Healthy Rivers and Streams and the transit, which in essence, you've already talked about on that date, and finish up today with the solid waste fund with the 20 minutes that we have left. Just looking for some direction for the staff that came back for that.
That sounds like a plan to me.
Does, will that work for you guys? Sorry that you came back for it.
They needed a walk.
They needed a walk, yeah. All right, well, we will wrap up with Kathy and Brian today then on the Solid Waste Center.
Thank you. Brian Pettit, I'm your Public Works Director, and with Kathy Hall, the Solid Waste Manager for Picken County. Just to kick it off, I'd like to talk a little bit about solid waste and that you have a real-time economic indicator on your hands. Anytime you want to go to the landfill and find out what's going on in the community, that's the place it happens. And we have those numbers to relate to you if you'd like at that. There is a shift going on at the landfill. And I alluded to it earlier when we spoke about Public Works, but really from reuse and recycling and diversion techniques to extend the life of the landfill, we've really shifted into a greater focus on sustainability and environmental safety. And I think you'll see that through what we're recommending to spend money on and what we've done this year. One thing that we won't talk about unless you want to a little bit today is our Living Lab workshops that occurred this past summer. That is scheduled for an upcoming work session in December where we can spend more time on it. I think it really requires a little bit greater focus than we can provide it here at Budget. And we'll bring the Living Lab workshops that have occurred at the landfill, along with update on our CSU Extension Program during that time. So with that, Kathy.
All right. Well, 2014, we've had a busy year. Nobody's been bored or wanting for work at the landfill. So we'll go over some of our highlights that we've accomplished this year and still continuing to accomplish. The recycling center collection, privatization of that. We had a real issue with the two decades we were managing that before. It was a costly program. $350,000 to $400,000 a year it was costing us. Terrible inefficiency in our collection process. We were running hook trucks two, three, even five times a day up and down the valley to collect and switch out containers. And then we were also limited on the materials we collect. By switching over to a private company waste management, which happened in April, we were able to save, we're estimating $214,000 annually. We've added the convenience of single-stream recycling, more materials we can collect, different materials we can collect. And right now, we're estimating, we've seen about a 20% increase in the volume coming into those recycling centers. And it also allowed us to start working with the City of Aspen on just the management of that, the Rio Grande Center, as well as the cost of that Rio Grande Center. In addition to another big project, we moved forward in 2014 with a landfill expansion. As we're all aware, the landfill has a limited life, and we need to maximize the life of that landfill to the extent possible. Right now, we already have about 20 years left. The expansion will allow us to put in another 10-year landfill space. So that's a big one. And as we're all aware as well, there won't be another landfill in Picken County. Way too expensive, and these million, multimillion-dollar homeowners are not going to want a landfill near their properties. Another great program that we improved upon was the Household Hazardous Waste Center. As you can see from the before picture, woefully inadequate. We provide a year-round household hazardous waste collection service, but as you can see, no environmental controls, no health and safety controls. We were unable to restrict access to the public. It was constantly running people out of there who would go down there and try and grab a can of spray paint. So this year, we were able to purchase the ambulance tent from the hospital for a very reasonable cost and worked with facilities to get it retrofitted for our snow and wind It improved our environmental controls and site safety. We can lock the facility at night. And the one big thing is it's allowed us space to consolidate and lab-pack chemicals for shipment from our hazardous waste collections. We're estimating that's going to save about 35% in the cost of the disposal and management of those chemical wastes. So a big, we're very proud of that facility. A lot of hard work by Aurelio Rubio and Jed Miller to get that facility set up. In addition, we went after grants and rebates this year as well. You know, there's a lot of programs and studies we'd like to do, but we're not necessarily funded to do that. And grants allow us that opportunity. We received a $125,000 grant from the Bureau of Reclamation, which we're just now getting started on. And that's going to allow us to study the feasibility use of that water coming off of that proposed septic wastewater treatment facility. And I think we can come up with some really cool ideas that we wouldn't normally have been able to do before. And in addition, we were able to see, receive $20,895 in rebates from the state of Colorado for the recycling program. And that will allow us to use money for other recycling and diversion programs and just increase perhaps the education and outreach of our current programs. And also, we have a really great facility at the landfill, and we aren't tooting our horn enough. So this year, we embarked on getting awards and recognition. And our first one we were able to accomplish, we got Silver Status in the Colorado Environmental Leadership Program. And that is going to measure our diversion goals, our recycling, any sustainability programs that we have. And then next year, we're going to shoot for gold. You can't get gold in your first year. We have to set in measurable benchmarks to test that again. So look for a gold banner like Aspen has. And other highlights, we are constantly being asked by the public for more education and outreach on diversion. It's easy for the public to put their trash out at the curb and watch it go away, but there are big impacts when you don't really realize how your trash is impacting our landfill. And so we partnered this year with the City of Aspen Core and Aspen Sports and held a movie screening. It was called Trash, starred Jeremy Irons, and it discussed consumerism in our purchasing and how it affects the solid waste systems around the world. And it was attended by 150 people, a big popular program. And then we also did a ski collection and snowboard collection outside of the event, and those were sent for reuse and recycling. We're planning another one of those movie screenings called Taste the Waste on November 19th, and that is focusing on our food waste habits and how much food waste, how much food we waste and how it impacts the solid waste system. So sort of getting into our initiatives, again, we're going to continue with the landfill expansion. That'll be about an 18-month process we're looking at. And then as GR mentioned before, the septic system issue in the Picken County. We have an estimated 3,000 septic systems just in Picken County alone, and there is no up-valley treatment facility for those systems. People aren't treating them enough, and they're overflowing, causing impacts to our watershed. And it's expensive for these residents to get rid of the waste. They have to go down-valley to South Canyon landfill, and it points beyond rifle and silt. So we're working to continue with the permitting as well as design and engineering for that facility this year. And with GR's approval of an assistant engineer, we're going to be opening probably an office for him at the landfill, whether he likes it or not. And the other issue we're dealing with is the shooting range. It's in our solid waste master plan that that facility needs to move. There are numerous noise complaints from Woody Creek. It's also an environmental impact. We have lead contamination at that shooting range. It's been in use for 30 years. It's never been remediated or cleaned, so we need to look at that. And also, it's our number-one priority spot where we're looking to put the wastewater treatment plant. So we're beginning to work with the public safety groups and determining to move that shooting range to another area on the landfill, as well as remediating and doing a corrective action plan for the current shooting range. As I mentioned before in the Taste the Waste movie, food waste is a big issue for solid waste systems across the country. 60% of food waste from restaurants, 60% by volume, by weight, is food coming from restaurants and institution with food service. So it's a big issue. It creates greenhouse gas, methane in the landfill, which is 21 times more potent than CO2. And it also is taking up space in the landfill. So we are beginning a partnership with the City of Aspen to develop a food waste collection program at commercial facilities and restaurants. And currently, right now, we have the St. Regis signed on, Little Now, the Aspen Club, the airport, and the jail. So, and we're looking to grow that. We think once we get these systems in place and collections in place, we'll see more restaurants and food institutions joining in. In addition, again, for the demand for education and outreach for our diversion programs and solid waste, we are developing an application for an iPad or some type of tablet, or even an iPhone, on composting. It's an online app. We'll be introducing Wooly the Mammoth with his sidekick, Willie the Prospector, I believe his name's called. And it's an education for classrooms, middle school, on how compost works, how to do a composting program, and the benefits of compost. So we're going to be seeing that released in full probably in early 2015. It's being tested now by teachers, and they're kind of giving us some hints and advice and some comments. So it's really exciting, and you'll, I think, like Wooly the Mammoth. He's adorable. Electronics, July 2013, the state of Colorado banned all electronics from entering the landfill. So we're looking at an in-house opportunity to recycle and reclaim those electronics materials, break it down on-site, the different pieces, and getting it to market directly. We currently have a very robust electronics recycling collection program. It's shipped off-site. It's hauled down the road, it's hauled to Denver, it's hauled to Grand Junction for another company to break down and receive the benefits of that brokering of the materials. We're looking to start a program to do it on-site. And in an unrelated kind of benefit, people with cognitive disabilities in the valley have a high unemployment rate. So we're looking to shadow the program called Vern down in Colorado Springs, in which they employ people with cognitive disabilities to break down those electronics. So it's really a double benefit. We improve the efficiency of electronics recycling and provide employment to people that need employment. And then on the landfill, we, yes, I'm sorry.
Can I add, not that you don't have a long enough list, but as you're moving into your next center layout, we talked about this briefly in the past, is that to look at an opportunity for a renewable energy resource out there, such as solar paneling, and where that might be, and if there's any opportunity for public-private partnerships and things like that. I'd like to see that added as an initiative.
Absolutely.
It's going to cost me, George.
It'll cost me a couple of cookies.
Yeah, we are, we have a group starting to assemble.
Uh-oh. Hurry. And then finally, on the landfill front, we are nearly full at the top working face, the top of the landfill. That's our current fill operations. We probably have about another month or two before we move the fill operations down into the aggregate area. In the meantime, the top of the landfill will remain as a working operation on top of the composting aggregate material. And so what we have to do and what's required by the state is to put an intermediate cover on top of that landfill so that we can continue to use it for operations. So we're going to see that happen probably in the next few months as well. Any questions on the initiatives?
Rachel?
I just didn't see the solid waste construction in the budget under capital projects and replacements. I don't know if it's its own line item or, you know, for the sludge facility.
Oh, the sludge facilities?
Yeah.
Septic.
It's the $732,000 cost.
Okay, so it's the other department equipment and capital.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should go ahead and label that as what it's going to be.
We didn't pull out of it this year, nor do we carry it forward for next year.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So moving forward. To kind of review our budget, we are exceeding our revenues that we projected for 2014. And the reason is, as Brian mentioned, we are a good economic indicator of what's going on in the valley. We are seeing a significant jump in construction and demolition debris coming into the landfill, as well as crushable material. And that's the rock and dirt material that comes in from excavation sites that we crush into an aggregate product. We bring in about 90,000 tons a year of material for disposal in the landfill. And previously, it was about a 50/50 mix of just general solid waste to construction demolition debris. Construction demolition debris is about 65% right now to 45% MSW. Construction demolition debris is about 65% right now to 45% MSW, and so it's contributing to why we're closing so fast on the top. And then continuing down, our total expenditures, pretty much on target for what we were planned on. However, the aggregate processing, because of that tripling of crushable material that we projected, we had to go ahead and ask for supplemental this year to crush that aggregate. We haven't used the 580,000 that we projected. In addition, vehicles, and I called Joan on this a couple of days ago, why we saw such a jump in our 2014 estimate of vehicle purchases. We, that's a lot of carryforward he indicated, and we were able to purchase a new hook truck this year, which is on its way, with a number of attachments. And I was like, "Joan, why is it so expensive?" And he's like, "It's really multiple vehicles in one." So it's going to replace a hook truck with the roll-off containers. We're going to have a plow, a sander, a water truck on that as well, so it's a really beneficial piece of equipment. We also purchased a used tractor to run the ag mixer we have on-site for our compost, so that was added to that as well. And we're showing a couple, a few years out of deficit. However, with our very healthy revenues and we're exceeding our revenue projections, I think you're going to see not as big of a deficit, if any at all. I think we're going to exceed and be in the positive for this year.
Rachel?
You know, Rob, out of respect to the city for getting to use the room, I think we really need to pack up. I do have a question I'd like to answer at our next meeting or whatever, you know, particularly it's just under the expenditures of going up so significantly, about $393,000 from last year, and it looks like a lot of that is, you know, personnel, training, and things like this, and it might very well be, you know, all fine, but I'd like to go over that in more detail than time allows us today.
I think we should schedule a little more time. I've got a couple of questions and concerns and thought process, mostly about, there's always so much going on at the landfill, and should there be? I'm honest. I mean, you know, let's keep our eye on the ball, you know. I think these are all great programs, and I think they should all be addressed, but I go back to things like the septic thing. There were all sorts of things that we had concerns about, and I want to make sure that those things get done before we start doing an app on composting for schools and those sorts of things. But, and this is budget talk. I looked over the budget, too. It looks very acceptable to me, but I think there are some big thing, big-picture things there, too. Some last quick comments here. I mean, maybe we schedule 15 minutes on our next budget thing.
We can bring that back in November.
Very good.
Okay, we will wrap.
Much ado and adjourned.
Much ado and adjourned, accepted, approved.
Very good.
We're done.
All right. Thank you, thank you, City of Aspen, for...